All right, so let's go ahead and get started. I'll call to order a regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Phyllis, can you do roll call, please?
Sure. Chairperson Bob McCool.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Lisa Ritchie.
Here.
Commissioners Phyllis Harden here, David Harper.
Here.
Jerry Malia, Ben Miller.
Ben Miller is here. He's just only on audio right now.
Steve Witty.
Here.
Planner Stephen Williams.
Here.
Attorney Dan Harvey.
Here.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, we have time for a public comment on the consent agenda, which we don't have tonight. So no consent agenda and any non-agenda items. So this would not be in reference to the either the Prose Master Plan update or the final development plan, final development plan for Rogers Farm. That'll be later. But if you have any public comments on non-agenda items, you can raise your hand and we'll call on you. If you're on just your phone, it's star nine.
Correct.
Raise your hand. All right, it doesn't look like I see any hands going up, so we'll move on. We have a presentation on the Prose Master Plan. And Stephen, do you have anything prior or?
Just a quick introduction, I guess. So the Prose Consulting, so Mike Betts with Prose Consulting is here. So he's providing an update to all the boards and commissions before they present to the town board what the what the master plan update is. So he's doing his rounds and he's here at Planning Commission tonight.
Thank you so much, folks. Thanks so much. My name is Mike Betts. I'm the principal with Prose Consulting, but also a recovering Parks and Recreation Director. So I did spend several, you know, a couple decades on Leslie's side of the table. And tonight is really just an overview of the process for you. It will be, it'll be short and sweet, to the point. And what I intend to do is then see if you guys have any questions afterwards. But I'm going to share my screen to just kind of walk through the overview of the project and we'll go from there. Oh, it says that I am not able to share, so I'll wait. Okay, there we go. Great. All right, everybody can see my screen?
Yeah.
Great, okay. So as I mentioned, this is, we'd love to call this an update of the Prose Plan. But the last plan was done in 2005. It is a little bit more. Accomplished and also understand what was not accomplished, but more importantly, understand the why behind things. Our work is really centered around just Parks and Recreation. We have done work with the U.S. Olympic Committees and we have worked in foreign countries. But primarily, we work across the United States and none of our work is with local government. We have done several projects in Colorado, currently working on Fort Collins, their master plan update. And we have recently completed Durango's. Logan Simpson is a partner with us on this project. Their role is pretty limited, but they will provide some valuable insight. Their role is really around park and facility inventory and assessments. They are going to speak to connectivity analysis and they are going to provide us with, which I'll talk about in a moment. They will provide us with three conceptual, high-level conceptual master plans for three specific sites within your current system. So our process is proprietary to Prose. But it really begins, I don't want to say it begins and ends with the community, but it really absolutely needs to be rooted and found a foundation with the community and their needs and priorities. We certainly recognize that, especially right now, there is not unlimited resources to meet every need. So it's really about understanding the priorities of the community. One thing I think is really important to recognize is you have an abundance of parks, open space and trail acreage right now. And that is not to say that that needs to change in a reduction. But it's a credit to the community, it's a credit to your value system, it's a credit to Planning Commission, Town Board, you know, Prostag and all of the other advisory committees to recognize that, I think, close to 31% of your community is acreage total is made up of Parks, Recreation and Open Space. So along those lines, then, when we start to talk about standards, it's really about how do we manage the recreation, the parks, open space and trails and make sure that you're using your O and M resources appropriately. Level of service is really about some of what I mentioned. How much more parkland do you need? How many more, you know, what's the connectivity associated with your trail system? So, but it also can dive into, do you need more playgrounds? Do you need pickleball courts? Do you need any of those park amenities that are that support the experiences that the community desires? I mentioned early on, financing and revenue opportunities are certainly key to implementing any master plan. And we fully intend to create a financial strategy that is very specific to the town. Partnerships very strong in your community and we need to, however, ensure that all of these partnerships are win-win. That the, you know, the folks on the other side of the table have enough skin in the game and that they're performing as representatives of you all and of the, you know, the Prose Department, that they're representing you in a way simply because if they're a partner of you, then they're absolutely an extension of you in terms of providing programs, services and/or other amenities. And of course, governance and organization, it's really about understanding you have staff capacity and are you aligned functionally to implement the master plan? It can be a huge barrier to implementing a master plan if you don't have the right staff in the right location and/or the capacity to actually implement the recommendations that come out of this. So we are very much going to try to do our very best from a public input perspective. We really kind of look at it as a collaborative planning effort, which obviously begins and ends with the community. We're in the process of starting to create some curiosity about the plan. We do need to be clear about what this plan is, but also what it is not. We are not really diving into, though we will do some conceptual master plans. We're not really looking to solve every last small detail and issue. This is a system plan. So I think it's important for the community to recognize that and understand what that means. We need to create confidence that the community feels that their voice has been heard and reflected and represented in the plan. And of course, given COVID, we need to be creative about this. So as has been mentioned by Steve, we are doing the rounds. I think this is my fifth or sixth opportunity to be in front of committees, Town Board, as well as you all, to just kind of provide an overview of the process and make sure people know that it's going on. We will dive into this a little bit more as we start getting into late summer and early fall. We are going to use Bang the Table for a survey in August and September. We are going to do a series of public meetings and presentations, which I'll wrap up with at the end of this. And we are going to do virtual town hall meetings. Our first one is actually scheduled as of just last week. It's scheduled for Monday, August 3rd at 6:30 PM. And that will be done via Zoom and it will be done in webinar format. The cool part about this is the community will actually have an opportunity to partake in what we'll call live polling right there on the spot. Not only will they be able to answer questions, but they'll be able to see the results right there. So as I mentioned, the concept plans really going to be led by Logan Simpson, but very much influenced by the community input. We have kind of chosen tentatively three sites. They are not locked in stone, but the Town 15 site, which is currently undeveloped town-owned property. It's been mentioned in previous, you know, community engagement in which Prostag has done over the last four or five years as a location for a potential indoor facility or indoor swimming. Or possibly just, if that doesn't shake itself out, what are the highest unmet needs of the community that can be reflected in this site? And then your two pool sites, you know, they're older. Not going to say that a 20-plus-year-old pool is significantly old, but the design of them really limits your community's ability to engage in it from an aquatic perspective. It has very limited capacity and certainly right now is not meeting the needs of swim teams. I would almost venture to say, having done the Boulder Aquatic Master Plan a few years ago, that it's likely that many of your swimmers had the Boulder, especially given the number of pools and indoor pools that they have and lap lanes available. So capital improvements and financing, just very quickly. We are going to root this in the, over what we'll call a total cost of ownership plan. And it simply begins with understanding that a capital investment is an asset, but it's also one as soon as you put something in the ground that is going to be used by the community, it has to be managed and maintained. And that happens with the operations and maintenance budget that the Town Board adopts every year. So we can't just build something and assume that it's going to take care of itself. But the other component of this is life cycle replacement. We always don't look at parks as being infrastructure and assets, but every asset in a park system has a useful life. For example, a playground is intended to last for 15 years. So you have to understand that at some point, anything that you build with that one-time dollars upfront is eventually going to have to get life cycle replaced. But the key is really having the operations and maintenance dollars year over year to ensure that your capital asset actually reads, reaches its intended life cycle. So I use the analogy, buy a new car, don't have enough money to change the oil in the car and you're likely going to be much sooner than you had intended. Yes, that's a very rudimentary example, but it does apply simply to almost every asset that you have in your parks containing, whether you're doing it yourself or whether it's a third-party contract. So our capital improvement plan will actually be divided up into three buckets. The first bucket is just what needs to be life cycle replaced over the next 10 years. The second bucket is where there are opportunities within your existing park system, your developed park system to make some strategic changes. This could come in this, the form of something simple like adding more shade. It could come in the form of adding a splash park to an existing park. Could come in the form of adding an additional picnic shelter. It's certainly not going to, you know, potentially change dramatically your existing park system, but it could add elements to your system that meet your community's needs. And then the last bucket is really the bigger picture bucket. Do we need to redo some of the parks or invest in the development of new parks like Town 15? Should we or should we not build an indoor facility? Do we or do we not renovate both pools? Those are the decisions that will be made that would fall into bucket three. It's also a reason that we like to divide this up into three buckets is simply because there are different funding strategies associated with accomplishing each of these buckets. There's not a lot of fun sexy money out there for sustainable, for life cycle replacement. That typically comes directly from the town. That's usually not even a lot of grant money. Yes, there are potential opportunities for donations and/or matching grants, but typically it's not going to be something that you overhaul your entire system that's in need of life cycle replacement with that kind of money. So it helps us to align funding strategies to ensure that anything that we provide you coming out of this plan is realistic, it's implementable, and probably most importantly, it's financially sustainable. So as I mentioned before, we are going to engage you all over a series of meetings, including the community. As has been mentioned, we're kind of on meeting series one, just providing an overview. Meeting series two is really about community need findings. Three is about those technical findings, inventory assessment, level of service, standards. And then when we get to four and five, it's really, all of this really has an opportunity to build on itself so that everybody understands why the recommendations are being made the way they are and what the implementation plan looks like, so that when we get to the adoption component, you know, we're in a position where you've heard it all before. You've had opportunities to provide feedback, ask questions along the way. And we intend to do this with staff, the community, each of the advisory committees, you all and Town Board every step of the way. And that wraps me up. Any questions, concerns, comments, suggestions that I may help answer or address for you?
Thanks, Mike. I can just work through. Do you want to stop the share? That'll help me look at my board. Lisa, do you want to start? Do you have any comments, questions or?
I think this is really exciting and I really appreciate the focus on the CIP budgets and long-term maintenance. And I think you said it best, we're working from a really good place. But how can we make sure that we're managing this well and making, you know, kind of targeted improvements and understanding, I think, the long-term ramifications of the decisions? So I'm very excited. I think this sounds great.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. David, do you want to go next? And then Steve, I'll call on you after David.
I have no questions. I share Lisa's, if you want, sorry, Commissioner Ritchie's opinion on the whole process.
Thanks, Scott, Steve. And then Ben, have you got next?
Yeah.
Questions? Thanks. Oh, sorry.
Sorry. I love the idea. I love what you're doing. I guess I just have one question is, you know, we're updating this, which is long overdue, but we haven't updated our comprehensive plan. Should that come in order, the comprehensive plan and then this? Or do you have any thoughts on that? Because to me,
Sure.
comprehensive plan says every five years, ours is eight or nine years old and just how that.
Yeah, I think that's a great point. And it's something that we've discussed with town staff at a high level. But, you know, it kind of works one of two ways, right? It works in a way in which the town can have an updated, the town can have an updated, sorry, the joys of Zoom, right? The town can have an updated comprehensive plan. And then what ends up happening is you, you are kind of, I don't want to say held to those those guidelines and level of service standards that are typically found in a in some cases you are. And to change, to present a master plan, a Parks master plan, you know, simply if you make recommendations that are in conflict with your comprehensive plan, then you're looking at a comprehensive plan or a general plan. Parks master plan, do all of the analysis that is associated with the parks that to feed into your next comp plan, which is probably not more than a couple of years away. So the information, so in essence, I think what we're doing is we have an opportunity to really that may not be as full.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. Let's see, Ben, you were next and Phyllis, you can go after Ben.
No questions on my end.
Okay. Phyllis, anything?
No, no questions. Thanks.
All right. And yeah, I agree, this looks awesome, Mike. I, the only thing I'm concerned about, and it's not really directly related to this particular plan, but a lot of things that we're trying to do during this time. And I'm struggling a little bit with trying to do all these things over Zoom where people can't attend. And, you know, you just, we start to lose things, right? Husband and wife trying to, you know, that might come or older kids that might come to a charade or come to a public meeting or come to a presentation. And it just feels like we're, you know, we're pushing stuff through, not pushing, but we're trying to keep moving forward with things, you know, and just losing sight of the fact that we really can't get the kind of input that we need for these kind of things. And so that, I don't know that I need you to speak to it, you're welcome to, but, I mean, we have technically challenged people that can't participate. We have, you know, you can't get body language or emotion. You miss people because maybe there's one computer in the household. I don't know, it just, I'm struggling with, you know, how town business.
Yeah. I think from, I think your concerns are valid. They were generally expressed at a high level by the Town Board as well. I think from a gathering data perspective, like surveys, we actually, over the last four months, since we do this work all over the country, have actually seen an uptick in the number of people that have responded to surveys. We have held virtual community meetings that, for whatever reason, have been more heavily attended than what we typically would have done in the past, which is the road show or the dog and pony show. You know, I think the other thing that we have the opportunity to do with Bang the Table is we can take this information and continually post it. We can record it and post it and people can kind of stay up to date. But that said, Parks and Recreation is very much a touchy-feely social, social opportunity, social recreational leisure time. And so we will lose some of that. But from a pure data perspective, I'm not technically all that concerned just simply because I think we actually have eliminated some of the barriers in terms of people not having to be at a specific location at a specific time, at a specific date to engage. And so I think really through Bang the Table, we're going to have a level of community engagement, at least from a numbers perspective, that is greater than we would if we were just doing in-person public meetings. But I understand exactly where you're coming from, especially given the nature of Parks and Recreation generally.
Yep, well, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, Mike, thank you. Appreciate it.
Sure, guys. Thank you. We'll talk to you down the road.
All right, so next on the agenda is a continuation of the public hearing, final plat and final development plan for Rogers Farm. This public hearing was closed as of the last meeting, but in light of new information and the public. Dan, do I need a motion to reopen this or can I just simply? Yeah, I would set it to a motion to reopen. Okay, so I think we have a lot of public that would like to speak. Stephen has a presentation I need to confirm. Commissioners Witty and Harden watched the video and would like to do that in a, I'd like to reopen the hearing to do so. I'll make a motion to reopen the public hearing.
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Ritchie. You want to do a roll call vote, Phyllis?
McCool?
Yes.
Oh, I'm blessed to seat here. Ritchie?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Witty?
I abstain, I think, because I wasn't in the meeting, so I don't know that I can vote, so I think I abstain.
Well, you can vote.
I can? Okay, then yes.
Harden? Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, so the public hearing has been reopened. And Commissioner Witty, can you confirm that you watched the video and can participate?
All three hours and 35 minutes of it.
All right. And Commissioner Harden?
Technically, I didn't watch it, but I listened to it to do the minutes. So yes, I did listen to it.
All right. Is that cool, Dan? I would say she knows it probably better than we do.
Right.
Okay, so let's see. So Stephen has been very gracious and worked to answer some questions from last week and put a small presentation together. So I'd like to have him do that and then we can have the applicant address any questions or respond to that. So Stephen?
Yeah, I'm happy to get started on the presentation. My understanding, I guess, was that, you know, if Commissioner Witty or Commissioner Harden had any questions on, you know, from viewing the meeting, we would start with that. So is that how we want to proceed or do you want me to start with my presentation? Okay, so if you guys, either Commissioner Harden or Commissioner Witty, if you have any questions based on your review of the application, you can address that to staff or the applicant now.
I'll go first if it's open. So the bad news, the good bad news is it was three hours and 30 minutes. The bad news is I could take notes and ask questions along the way. So I definitely have probably more questions than normal. And it allowed me time. I actually went out and visited Stapleton, Longmont and Riverdale Wee cottages this past weekend to kind of get a visual. And that was really after Commissioner Harper said he did that, at least looked at one of them. So it was very insightful for me. So out of that, I do have a couple questions, a couple comments. And again, I like the Wee Cottage product itself. I think it's very enticing. I do think it fits a need in the community. So, and I thought the presentations were really good. So I'm going to hit on a couple of things. Some of them were covered, but I think I probably will hit on them again. Landscaping, so I think Commissioner Harper hit on the fact about permanent sprinkler systems. And I think it's important that we get that documented in there. What is a permanent sprinkler system? And that that's a buried sprinkler system and not one that sits on top of the ground. And I think that's how it's written in most of our FDBs, but I want to make sure that we get that in there. One question I had is the walkway. So I got thinking about this and looking at it and saying, are people going to try to cut across the traffic circle and walk from this development to the new town? I know that there's a bridge underneath and I know we're going to develop that, but people take the quickest, shortest path. I didn't hear anyone ask that question and I'm just kind of interested to know if anyone thinks that's a concern.
I hadn't thought about it, but that is, I, that's sure. I mean, that's worth thinking about.
Okay, because I don't know that we talked about putting any, you know, lights in to stop people because, but I just see people cutting across there. I would probably cut across if it was me. So I just throw that open as a thought.
Maybe we can let Alex speak to that in a little bit here, but maybe get all your questions out.
Sure. One thing that wasn't clear, you guys talked about this a lot, but I got lost in it. So there's 8.8 acres and then there's 2.2 acres of undeveloped space. But does that include the open space that's along McCaslin or is that in the 6.6? So the actual developed is much less than the 6.6.
Is that a quick answer, Stephen?
So as I understand the question, the 2.39 acres is the open space along Cochrane. The rest of the acreage is kind of more around. So there's two basic blocks, the development and the north block, block one, and then the south block, block two. And that includes the area along McCaslin, both of those do. So it's closer to the So it's closer to the, if it's 6. or 8.76 acres, and you subtract 2.4 essentially, then that's the amount of area that's being developed.
Okay, but then theoretically, if it's another acre or two of open space along McCaslin, that's not going to get developed, because they tried to push it off of their, the actual developable, the land that we're going to build on is much less.
Correct. In terms of the parcels in the, that area is smaller, correct?
Okay, okay. It just seems, to me, it got the number of units, and I really saw it as I went out to look at the other ones, that they're really on top of each other, and they're not as close, the setbacks, which I'll address. Are all the garages attached in this? It seems like they are, but the other ones I looked at, some were, some weren't.
It's a mix, and there's fewer that are attached than are. So I think that they, I don't know, maybe they have 12 units that are attached, something like that, out of the 61. Most of them are detached.
Most are detached, okay.
They have the ability to attach all of them, but the product design is to kind of have like a townhome scale and townhome price point with an actual detached, you know, single-family lot. That's what makes this product unique, so that's what they're striving for.
Okay, and then having the pad to the left or the right of the garage if it is detached?
So most of the units have a two-car garage, where you don't have a two-car garage, it's a single-car garage with a separate parking space? Is that what you're talking about, the pads?
Yeah.
So if it is a single-car garage, the second parking space occurs immediately adjacent to that garage.
Okay, and I thought, as I read through the proposal a little bit, there's a couple of these garages that are actually attached to each other. Neighbors are attached to each other. Is that correct?
Yep, that's what we're meaning by the attached, yeah. So that becomes a duplex. And the only place the product is attached is at the garage, it's not at the living wall, so to speak.
Right. I would tell you, just from my standpoint, that's a really bad look from the street. Just, again, I'll throw that out, just from going around and looking at it, there were very few of those, and they did not, looking through, it really doesn't give it an open look, it really cuts it off because those two go together, and so, my opinion. Sprinkler systems, does each of the houses have their own sprinkler systems and not a community sprinkler system?
So every house will have a bib, like a hose bib, in order to water their area at minimum, whether or not they install irrigation is, it's probably not going to happen, given the amount, like you don't normally irrigate within five feet of your house, and most of the yard is within five feet of the house, so I would be surprised if they have an irrigation system within those. But each house does have a hose bib in order to, you know, water plants or whatever happens within their front yard space.
Okay, and then can you remind me how the fencing is? It seemed like we were having fencing in the front yard, but no fencing in the alley?
That's how it's designed, yeah, so the front yard space, and I can pull up an illustration if I need to.
I think that's good, I just, but is the fencing going to be, you know, is it going to be required to be the same?
Yeah, we had them added detail to show that that fencing would be consistent among the homes. So now it's part of their PD and part of their final development plan.
Okay.
It's a picket fence, it's only four feet tall.
Okay, and that's what I thought.
And it's somewhat porous, it's not a solid fence either.
Yep. Just throw on, if we've thought about adding anything to slow down traffic through that neighborhood, I know we think it won't have a lot of traffic, but is there anything that we thought about, putting any type of devices to slow traffic down, to make it less desirable to cut through?
The main deterrent for traffic is the design of West Douglas is only going to connect from First Street to McCaslin, and then you're going to have to go south to get to Thomas Street to the south in order to get really into original town. So it's not a direct connection, part of their application, which isn't part of the area that they're actually developing, but it's just west of it, within their single-family homes that are going in, involves removing the right-of-way of Douglas between First and Second Street. So that's the area that's currently being developed with single-family homes, and they're proposing to acquire that land from the town through a pre-claimed deed, and then they've already actually developed parks in those areas, and they're going to be pocket parks for the entire, they'll be publicly accessible pocket parks, is how they proposed it.
Yeah, I really liked the one, the one pocket park that I saw, it was really nicely done, I forget which development.
Stephen, this is Alex, if you want me to jump in on that pedestrian question?
Sure.
And the concern was going from here through the roundabout to get to Main Street, was that the concern?
That is right.
Okay, so we provided, you know, two options to, for residents of this community to go to the town center. One would be through the roundabout, and there are pedestrian crossings on all four corners. You know, for 16, 18 hours out of the day, you know, there's traffic pretty light, and I don't think they'll be, have any problem with a pedestrian getting across. Of course, roundabout is a fairly confusing situation, especially multi-lane roundabouts. But, you know, you only look in one direction, you only cross one traffic stream at a time. So people that want to get there quickly will take that area. But we've also provided the option to go down first and take the planned trail that would cross Coal Creek, and then go under McCaslin Bridge, great separated, and then cross back, there'll be another crossing to come back and hook up to the town center. So you can either take the Coal Creek Trail all the way through up to Marshall, or at several points, get off onto the town center street system. So you have two options for those pedestrians that don't mind going through the roundabout, they'll have that option. For those that want to avoid it, they have an option, it's a little longer, but it's, you don't have to cross the heavy McCaslin traffic stream.
And are we thinking of putting up a flashing, you know, like the flashing lights, like we did on Colton Road by the?
Well, we just had a request for one, so we are evaluating whether that's a possibility, and, you know, certainly with this community, where you're going to have the connection from not only Rogers Farm, but the rest of the original town, and as we get more pedestrian traffic, certainly that'll be something we'll be looking for, and we'll install those as we watch the pedestrian volumes build, and right now, we're actually evaluating that.
Okay, yeah, I think, I just, I get concerned about people trying to cut across there without those flashing lights, because I think about me coming down that hill sometimes, and it's just, it gets busy, especially at that busy time, so.
Sure, it's a concern we'll be monitoring and making that provision that measures as soon as that we think it's warranted.
Okay, great, thank you, Alex. Okay, so I'm getting close to the end of my comments here. The three-story, the three-story home, I did not see that in any of the other developments, and I'm not sure why it's necessary. I know we talked about breaking up the line, but it didn't break up the line in any of the other developments that I went to, so I'm not sure why we would, and I know it's not a variance, but why we would go up higher just to add a third one, when I didn't see it in any of the other ones. So Bill can, Boulder Creek can address that later if they want. Also, HOAs, I'm kind of with someone who spoke up last time, that I think they should be separated and not combined. You have two very, very distinct products that are being sold, the one that's being sold currently by Boulder Creek, and then these, the price points are different by 100%, and the buyer is going to be different, and the needs and the wants of those, I think, are going to be different. So to combine those HOAs together, it just seems like we're doing a disservice to one or both of them, so I throw that out also. I would agree with the comments last time, that 61 homes seem too dense. Having a three-to-five-foot setback between houses is really close. The ones that I looked at, and again, that I went and visited, Stapleton seemed really close. The other, Longmont and Riverdale actually seemed a little further apart, but boy, three to five seems close, so. I think we do need parking signs in the, no parking signs in the alley to stop. It's the one thing that was really noticeable, there's parking all over the streets in those neighborhoods, because they don't, they have more people that live in those houses than we think they're going to be. And so, especially in Stapleton, there's people parking all over the place. And my last thing is more for the town board, and I know they probably aren't listening to this, but to me, we need to update the comprehensive plan, because we keep on talking about this, and Bob, Commissioner McCool made this comment a couple times, is that we have changed so much in eight years, and that comprehensive plan was started probably three or four years before that, and now we're saying that in 2020, we're looking to the comprehensive plan to approve this, and our needs and wants have changed, the economy has changed, the world has changed, and we're still approving things to the comprehensive plan. And I think shame on us for not updating it like we said we should in five years. And so I would call upon the town board, and if we can put it in amendment today, I surely would, that they need to get that thing updated and make it a priority. So I'll get off my soapbox now and stop. I'm done.
Thank you.
I think the only questions that I, I mean, I'll leave the question about density and separation and stuff for the applicant, but in terms of the landscaping question and the irrigation that you mentioned up front, I did want to respond to that, and that is, that is going to be permanent. So Commissioner Harper noted that, you know, in the narrative, it wasn't represented accurately, so we'll get that updated, but the plans do reflect that we will get permanent irrigation, and that's our standard requirement, even for something that's going to be like native seed, that generally only requires, you know, temporary irrigation to get started. We do require it to be permanent in case we do have a drought type of season, that we cannot go out there and water it and make sure it gets, make sure it is sustained and maintained over the duration, so.
Permanent is buried, right, not laid?
That is, that's the other, yeah, it is buried, it's not on top, so, and it's not a significant cost difference, that's part of the reason we require it.
And Commissioner Harden, do you have any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions now, and I'll save my comments for later.
Okay, sounds good. Stephen, do you want to, or should we let the applicant respond, or do we let the applicant respond to these?
Let's do that.
Provide us your analysis. So is this Mike that's talking to us?
Yes, good evening, commissioners, how you doing? Stephen, is this, am I just, or Chairman McCool, am I responding to Commissioner Whitty, or am I giving it?
Yeah, just, just.
Just a response to Whitty right now, please.
Yeah, Commissioner Whitty now, and then we'll give you opportunity as it makes sense.
Yeah, well, Commissioner Whitty, thank you so much for visiting those other communities, and part of my presentation tonight highlights some of the differences of what we built in the different communities, what we've learned from it, and how we're translating some lessons learned into Rogers Farm, so I'll give some clarity on that through my presentation. And if I skip over something, it's probably because I'm going to cover it later with some visuals. They will help talk about the fencing and the setbacks and the density primarily, not so much the three-story cottage. We do feel that's important, and we worked with Stephen to include that, because we studied it, and we said we don't have to put it in there, but we really, we showed Stephen the option, and it does create these nice spaces in the parks, and it creates some unique open spaces for kind of those local residents to congregate, and it really, and it does provide another product type, a slightly bigger product type, and we feel that it's worth it in the end to include those for architectural variety, as well as different price points, and capturing some views of the West, which will be really cool from some upper-level balconies, or upper-over balconies on those homes, so that's primarily why we included the three-story. And, yeah, just to clarify, the parking, the duplexes, that gets a little confusing when we're talking about, are we pairing the garages, pairing the homes, or is the garage attached to the home? At Rogers Farm, we will have all of the garages attached to the home, so most of them are two-car garages, and some are one-car garages with a parking pad. Essentially, there's no backyard area, we've switched everything to the front, and we offer really large porches on the front, six feet to nine foot in depth, as opposed to the communities you looked at, we're all four-foot, maybe some six-foot porches, but most are four-foot deep. So we've really enhanced the front part of the home and enclosed the front yard, and now we're positioning everything to face common greens, so it's really just kind of reversing the whole privatized outdoor living space of the Wee cottages. And that's kind of what we took from some of the lots at Blue Vista, and we're doing all like that at Rogers Farm, and we'll be doing that in another project in Erie as well. Stapleton, we do have another filing there that's going to be all these courtyard designs, so it'll be the style of the attached garages, attached to the homes facing courtyards, so really excited about that. Stephen covered a few of these, yeah, in terms of the comprehensive plan, I will be touching upon that, I mean, that is the document that's before us today. And I understand that it's eight years old or more, but that's, we go forward on the premise that that's a current valid document, and we pursue projects based on that, so I'll be speaking a little bit more to that, to say how we are adhering to the comprehensive plan in my presentation. Yeah, and that's really about the HOA, we are looking into that with one resident in the first phase of Rogers Farm. Does our preference to have one common HOA, that's always been the intent in what we've told home buyers to date. There's great inefficiencies when we start to break it up with these, with such few homes, having 27 homes and one HOA and 61 in another. That's ultimately going to make the, probably make the fees go up, but that is something we're working with those neighbors on, and we'll make an informed decision at the end of the day on how we're going to, if we choose to restructure our HOA or not. And that's all I have right now to answer your questions, and some more will be provided later.
And thank you, Mike. Stephen, do you have a document you shared with all of us?
Yeah, I'll give you a brief presentation, semi-brief, as brief as I get. All right, can you guys see my screen all right?
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, Stephen Williamstown staff. As stated, Agenda Item Four is a continuation of the meeting from June 23rd, relating to the rezoning subdivision and final development plans for Rogers Farm. During that June 23rd meeting, a few planning commissioners requested additional context regarding the extent of development that could occur under the existing RM zoning, which is residential medium density, as well as additional analysis as how this, regarding how this proposal both complies and/or deviates from the comprehensive plan. So staff provided both of these analyses through an addendum that was prepared for planning commission for this meeting and related to commissioners last week. I will briefly review that analysis now, but largely rely on any questions that PC may have on any of these topics or other issues related to this application that merit additional clarification. So we'll start with the density analysis relative to RM zoning. There are a couple of clarifications that need to be made first, which I just want to make sure everyone's understanding, and I think we mentioned this last meeting, but I'll restate it again tonight. So to begin, the Wee cottages are using the entire 8.8 acres. That's relative to this application in their density calculation. That is consistent with the town code. So based on this larger parcel size, roughly seven dwelling units per acre are proposed according to their proposal. Secondly, the density standard for this area is a bit of a moving target. So while the RM zoning suggests eight dwelling units an acre, as a limit, the comprehensive plan clarifies medium density ranges between six and 12 dwelling units per acre. So it also varies depending on what standard we're actually applying. And again, RM, the RM eight dwelling units an acre applies to RM zoning, and a new zone district is proposed through their PD request. So PC's request from our last meeting was to have some additional context regarding what density could result if the area were to develop under the current RM zone standards versus what's proposed tonight. So that, again, kind of adjusts the density calculation, because it involves lessening the developable area. So as related in staff's memo, it's difficult to project potential development, and assumptions need to be made, but this exercise is still useful, particularly in illustrating how the zoning regulations would be applied under RM zoning. The potential development scenario staff outlined in our memo addendum assumes the area in red is developable. Is developable and the areas along the creek. So the area kind of further north up here, as well as the area that's currently zoned agricultural along McCaslin are not developable. So after factoring in some acreage for public roads, roughly four and a half acres remained as developable. Which would yield 32 lots that meet the standard RM zoning requirement of 6,000 square foot, 6,000 square feet per lot. Staff's memo addendum also clarifies that the eight dwelling units an acre, that's this language kind of right in the middle of, of these two. These two tables. Specifies that, that this eight dwelling units an acre only applies to development projects that are proposed for over six lots. And over two acres. So this, the confusing thing about the code is that this, this regulation works in conjunction with our site development plan requirements. Which are outlined below. So this is the development or the requirements for the site development process. And site development process is very similar to our FDP, but it's assuming a by right development. So the exemption to this allows for single-family homes and duplex residences not to have to go through a site development plan. So what that means is that development within a zoned area like Rogers Farms. It would be a, the only requirement that would have to come to planning commission and the town board. Or the only application is the subdivision because the area is currently not subdivided. So staff essentially cannot control how an application is submitted to the town. So we couldn't, you know, require that it gets submitted as, as anything greater. The real trigger for that eight dwelling units an acre would be a multifamily site development plan. So anything that's three units, three units attached or a triplex or more qualifies as multifamily. And that's what would definitively trigger this six lots or two acre development, require a site development plan. And then actually have to adhere to the eight dwelling units an acre. A development proposal for this area involving single-family homes or duplexes. Could theoretically be built as, as described. So the 32 lots could be plotted and they could either build 32 single-family homes or 64, 64 duplexes. Which would actually exceed the density that's currently being proposed through the wee cottages. So although RM zoning infers eight dwelling units an acre restriction, this restriction would be difficult to apply for single-family or duplexes. Because site plan review is not required. And so I understand that, and I think that a lot of the questions that came in last week and came in to me via email. Were under the assumption that if we were to reduce the area and limit it to what's actually developable. We could, you know, result in a, a less dense area, but that's not necessarily the case. So that's the, the, a brief kind of quick overview of the, the RM zoning analysis. And again, that's just one example. And a lot of that was based off of what can be developed and what was developed at Fourth and William. In original town already under, under RM zoning. So moving on to the, to the kind of analysis on the comprehensive plan. This document was last updated in 2012, which we've, we've heard about already. At that time, the land use section identified 12 opportunity areas within original town or within Superior, excuse me. And Rogers Farm was identified as opportunity area number two. The preferred land uses within Rogers Farm were stated to be a mix of medium density residential and office. With the potential for community oriented uses to also be considered. The proposal was, this proposal is for residential use only. And as clarified in the addendum memo and on subsequent slides, some goals within the comprehensive plan can be perceived to be competing. Particularly as they relate to original town. So one could argue that the office uses are not in character with original town. Or that the impacts from a mixed development with office and residential could be more impactful, particularly in terms of traffic. Than the current residential use. Uses and as itself. These graphics within the comp plan on the left here illustrate the desired transition that is planned for Rogers Farm. Which would serve as a kind of a, an area that transitions between original town, which lies to the west. And downtown Superior, which lies to the east. Clarifying that more intense uses were proposed along McCaslin. And then a gradual transition to the existing original town development further west. That is where the allowance along McCaslin gives you a three, three-story option. Which is supposed to transition to the two-story option west of First Avenue. Additional design objectives listed within this illustrative map include avoiding the floodplain areas. Concentrating more intense uses east of First Avenue, establishing a distinct scale and character in relation to downtown Superior. Continuing the street grid of original town and creating a street connection that is coordinated with downtown Superior. This proposal was found largely to meet these objectives. The primary exception relates to the continuation of the street grid. Street connection however, has been provided. And that's shown over here, so this is their site plan. So Douglas Street, you know, the, this stub is already built. So they've been working off of that assumption that this is the connection and, and outlined or laid out their, their development plan accordingly. You know, with this curve in this road, it would be difficult to follow the, the street grid in and of itself. And also, you know, what's noted in staff's memo is, you know, continuation of the street grid creates kind of its own problems. If it goes all the way to the street, you have more access points. And original town becomes more accessible and potentially has more traffic. Other options would be, you know, to have cul-de-sacs at the end of each of these. Or an actual frontage road kind of, and that wouldn't be as visible or as sightly as, as the current landscape buffer is. When considering a rezoning application, the opportunity area visions outlined within the comprehensive plan provide the primary guidance. For staff as to how desire development. As, as far as, you know, what the desired development is for an area. The fact that the comp plan and the existing RM zoning do not align suggests that the rezoning, that a rezoning was. Kind of presumed to occur or at least contemplated. In addition to contemplating the office use that I mentioned earlier, which would, would not be compatible with the standard RM zoning. Medium density descriptions in the comp plan also differ from what's outlined in RM zoning. So the, what's outlined in RM zoning within the, or with, within median density residential within the comp plan is illustrated on this slide. The two big differences include the size of the lots, which can be as small as 29,997 square feet. And the density range that I mentioned earlier, which instead of being eight units an acre, can range between six and 12 dwelling units an acre. As discussed at the meeting last month, the wee cottages do not meet the lot size requirements envisioned by the comp plan. Lots as small as 1,540 square feet are proposed. So one of the other things staff's memo tried to clarify was that lot sizes. You know, affect certain things, but you know, when you're talking about density, you need to kind of consider it in a broader context. So we discussed the opportunity for these units to be connected by the garages. All of them could be connected, they could be combined into one lot and built as duplexes. And then they would actually meet that 3,000 square foot requirement. But is that the design that folks want? Commissioner Witty, for instance, mentioned that, that creates less, you know. Kind of a bigger wall of development and less opportunities to actually visually, visually see through something. So if the wee cottages are actually viewed as a preferred product to duplexes and townhomes, then a more appropriate condition. Could be to limit the PD application to only one dwelling unit per lot. And allow for the sizes, the lot sizes that are proposed. This would control, and it's, it's something that we, we should consider, you know, kind of regardless of where we land density wise. Just to ensure that, you know, because RM zoning allows for duplex, if they're proposing 1,540 square feet. We probably don't want a duplex on that size of lot and increase the density even further if that's a major concern of ours. So lastly, staff listed some of the primary areas that this proposal could be found to deviate from the comp plan. And this was outlined in staff's memo as well. So all of these sections are come from policy four within the comprehensive plan. So it includes a mix of uses, and that's already been mentioned. So clearly, it's not proposing a mix of uses, it's proposing residential uses only. But again, there's that competing kind of goal of whether or not residential uses is, is more consistent with existing development within original town. Protect existing residential uses is another goal, arguments, you know, towards this, you know, could be made either way. But traditional setbacks are one of the concerns that have been mentioned, those are, those aren't really defined. But you know, I think we would, we'd default to RM zoning setbacks and those, those aren't met. Protect original town from changing land uses, that would probably be fall, fall on. This is not a changing land use, it's consistent with the existing RM zoning. Rezoning proposals are also said, ones that integrate new land uses into an area in a manner that protects. The remaining existential, yeah, remaining and existing residential uses should not be precluded is another caveat to that policy. And then we've already mentioned the, the block pattern and kind of creating or continuing that street grid. So that is, is not being done, but we, and then I've gone, gone through how, you know, three potential scenarios for what would occur if, if the street grid was continued. And then lastly, face blocks, and this is really just an orientation question. Or a desire for the, the homes to be oriented towards the street. Wee cottages aren't always oriented towards the streets, some of them are oriented towards open space. But some of them are also oriented towards, towards streets. So those are the, those are the main ones that could be argued to be not, not meeting the intent of the, the comprehensive plan. That's it for my summary. If you guys have any questions, then me, now I'm happy to answer them or we can turn it over to Boulder Creek for their presentation.
And then let me check in with Commissioners here. And I may ask you to.
Stop sharing.
Everybody. Okay, so why don't you just raise your hand up? You have any questions, Stephen? I'm not seeing any. Okay, cool. So I, I didn't realize we had a presentation. I guess I want to back in on that. I'm hesitant to, to have a full presentation here. If there are answers to questions. Or other things that I think that's appropriate, what, what are we talking about presentation wise? Do you know, Stephen?
You know, I, I looked at it quickly, you know, what they, what they provided presentation wise. But my understanding is it's mostly a response to the concerns that were raised at the last meeting. So it's not a full presentation, it's not going over everything that they're doing. It's discussion like Mike alluded to earlier about, you know, setbacks and. Density and, and those type of things. And then some more examples, I believe, from their other developments in order to kind of clarify how this, you know. Is a, is consistent or, you know, more of an evolution of their, of their product.
Um, so that, um, let's see, so we also have a public comment and then probably additional response. So I guess Mike, I'll, I'll ask you if you could. Kind of come on here for a minute. I'm, I'm, would, I guess just like you to be respectful. I, you know, we have another agenda item tonight. And I mean, if there are some things that you haven't responded to that need to be responded to, I, that would be fine. I'd also ask, you want me to take public comment so that you can respond to them all at once? Or do you want to do it in two, two stages?
I would prefer two stages if you could afford me about 10 or 15 minutes. It's just a, it's mainly to answer questions from the last hearing. On qualitative aspects to the community that I think are worth talking through. Which affect density and setbacks and character of the community.
Yeah, if, if, yeah, if you keep, keep it to that, that would be great. So why don't we go ahead with you then next?
Yeah, I, I have some stuff on the comprehensive plan, but I will, I will gloss over that. I won't focus in on that as much. So I'll kind of breeze through that.
Yeah, I think, I think we beat that one to death, but yeah, go ahead.
Okay. The other thing I wanted to touch upon is we did have a neighborhood meeting last night with original town residents. And, and we did learn a lot, like to go through a few of those things if that's okay with the chairman. Yeah, some of the, I was just reading through a list of, that I, that I wrote down or came, took away from the meeting. That there was generally the consensus that there's just too many people walking and driving through original town. It was brought up, the people driving to the trailhead at the corner of Third and Thomas Street is excessive. And I think that the intent was with the new trailhead, with that, with, that that would alleviate this. And they said clearly not, people are always going down to that corner and driving down Second Avenue. And creating a nuisance with their parking down there. They had questions about the trail connections and particularly the connection to McCaslin and the underpass there. And is, is that going to encourage more people to be driving and biking and, and coming through original town? We did clarify a major point that there was a perception that we were vacating the portion of Douglas Street that connected to McCaslin. And we did clarify that we are proposing to vacate the portion of Douglas Street between First Ave and Second, Second Ave. And there was seemingly unanimous support for this, for connecting to McCaslin. With this proposal to encourage traffic to flow in and out of McCaslin and not through original town. There was extensive discussion on density and lot sizes and setbacks. And we explained our proposal in detail and clarified that as well as parking. People were wondering around Christmas parties and graduation parties, is there going to be a parking problem with, in those nights, or those times where there's excessive potential people gathering. There's questions about the floodplain and, and the desire to preserve the mature trees there. And what that floodplain project in the future by the town is, look like. And other than that, it's just more qualitative aspects to the design of the community. So Stephen, you know, did touch upon the comprehensive plan. And I, I did want to just, just reiterate that, you know, my interpretations where, when I read a comp plan to determining if, if we meet the intent of that comp plan is. By reviewing the general goals and policies and checking the boxes if it conforms, it checks the box if it doesn't, and they relate it not applicable. But in the case where there is a specific plan, as in the case with Rogers, the opportunity area two. I would, I would suggest that the detailed information in the area plan would generally prevail over other goals and policies. Or at least be considered more important than more general goals and policies. And at the end of the day, the rezoning should be in the best interest of the town and conform to the intent of, of the comp plan. We hope that our proposal for attainably priced and attainably sized housing for working singles, couples and seniors. Fulfills the goal of policy point two A, which was touched upon before, varied housing options. We hope this is important enough to consider this new neighborhood is in the best interest of the town. And I did want to point out this, this slide here. That, you know, our, the Rogers property is 17 acres and it is about 40% of the original town proper. And that's important to note that if you accept the premise that there's, you know, medium density housing envisioned for the comp plan here. And you look at the acreage, it, it comes out to five DU per acre. And when you look at the two distinct phases here. The phase one homes really maintained, really maintained that the setbacks in lot size and street, and street grid and block pattern of original town. And so we did this intentionally when we built upon phase one. And so that's important to know, cause then if you look at, at phase two. This is the transition parcel where we, the more intense use east of First Avenue. And it creates the distinctive scale and character in relation to downtown Superior and it speculates on two to three stories. And then also important is the impacts of the traffic of this second phase, particularly, but both phases. And our traffic study that states that 90 to 95% of traffic will be going out to McCaslin is really an important thing to know. And only 5 to 10% of the traffic flow is anticipated to go down Second Avenue towards the shopping center. And I did follow up with our traffic engineer to clarify this. And he did clarify that about 10 to 15% of traffic is for shopping and for retail. And so if this statistic is true. And so if this statistic is true, there should be very limited traffic going down Second Ave to your marketplace. And then also he did reiterate to me that in the year 2022 on Second Avenue, there's actually anticipated to be less trips than there are today, currently there's 395 trips. On Second Avenue and with the build out, there will be 330 trips per day. And I believe Chris explained this at the last hearing, but I just wanted to reiterate that in terms of traffic impact. That connection to the castle will really mitigate the potential trips generated by Rogers Farm. We did hear last night from residents about the increasing amount of traffic accessing the trailhead at Third and Thomas, and that could be a separate issue. That needs to be addressed or could be, it might improve over time with that new trailhead up the hill off McAsland. And this is just the excerpt that shows the directional traffic from our traffic study, 70% to the north, 30%, 20% to the south. And 5% to downtown and 5% on Second Avenue going to the shopping center. And I won't hammer home here on the com plan, but I just do want to point out that. If you do indeed accept the current comprehensive plan in this area plan for the Rogers property that we are conforming to all of the major tenants. Here are the trail connectivity, distinct scale and character and the concentration of uses as well as the transect here. And talking about the hot, the size of the homes and the uses and the intensity. And I wanted to point out also that we did purchase additional land through this process along the Caslin in addition to our property. At our cost that we will maintain or the HOA will maintain in perpetuity to create that, you know. A more manicured and well kept look on the edge of McAsland Boulevard. Some questions I wanted to clarify about the buffer areas that I didn't have a clear answer on before. Stephen asked me to just take a quick look at Rock Creek and Calmonte and what those buffers were, and I just wanted to roll through those real quickly. Rock Creek here, the narrowest part is 127 feet, obviously, there's some big open areas of 200 feet or more. In areas, but this is the pinch point 122 to 127 feet, Calmonte has about 100 feet. And a little bit more, but that's at the narrowest, the narrowest part there on Rogers property. As you can see here, the buffers range from 105 feet to 190 feet, the averaging about 150 feet. So very similar buffers from those other neighborhoods. And the issue keeps coming up about parking from residents, and we keep hearing that there's not going to be enough parking. And I just wanted to point out here that if you include all of the off-street parking that we're providing along with the. Public parking spaces on the east side of First Avenue. That comes out to 50 spaces, nearly one for every home out here. And when you add in the spaces across the street on First Avenue. And here and a few driveway spaces in the backs of homes, it equals 84 parking spaces for all of these homes shown here, including. These homes that are already being built along First Avenue, so that's over one space, it's 1.1 extra space per house. And that equals about 4.4 times that that's required by code, code requires 0.25 spaces guest parking. We're going to provide two spaces on the lot within a garage. For each lot and then have over one car for guest parking for each house, so. I just wanted to highlight that we are mitigating any concerns that if people don't park their cars in their garages, or if they use it for storage, which is something that is very difficult to control. We've mitigated that with the the great excess of of potential guest parking. Okay, so I want to go through a few of the qualitative aspects in just about five more minutes here, and I can wrap it up. Related to the cottage design, I wanted to address Commissioner Harper's concern at the last hearing upon his visit to Blue Vista. It looked like a lot of rock everywhere and didn't look good. I initially responded that he was referring to the fenced front yard areas, but I later realized that it was the the front yards in general that he was referring to probably. And I tend to agree with them that there is an overemphasis on low maintenance and keeping HOA fees low in these front yards in this community. So I'd like to just briefly walk through the various we cottage communities that Commissioner Witty had recently visited and explain how they differ. And what lessons we've learned from and how we're applying those lessons to Rogers Farm. And this one is Blue Vista, this the second one is the second or the alternative design at Blue Vista where they front courtyards. And and pocket parks and some have small front yards here, similar to what we're proposing at Rogers Farm. The difference from this photo is that we would be providing a five foot landscape strip between the fence sidewalk at Rogers Farm. A little nicer design in that sense, this is our project at Riverdale where we provide a similar design, there's about a 10 foot front setback. There is more landscaping in the front yard that is maintained by the HOA and a small backyard as opposed to a small front yard. That's proposed at Rogers. At Stapleton, similar design here, HOA maintained front yards, very much much more extensive landscaping in the front. Than our other we cottage communities and a small backyard that is different. But this is very similar to the design for the landscaping that we're proposing at Rogers Farm. And envision a picket fence going through here to define that five to 10 foot deep private front yard area and a five foot landscape strip between the sidewalk and that fence. And this is the level of landscaping, if you look through our FTP, this is what's reflected in there, and this will be fine tuned in our final construction drawings to really evoke that true cottage landscape design. And then I wanted to point out that we find tuned this clustered concept in a virtual virtual reality environment to pay attention to. A lot of details and nuances of fencing and the scale of these open spaces and pocket parks. And the extent of landscaping that was appropriate here. This is a snippet from our VR model and it highlights the landscaping along the front yards, similar to what would Rogers Farm would look like and how these spaces. And front porches would interact with the public domain of the pocket parks and courtyards and open spaces out the front. And this one is just the other side of that courtyard, it's a good example of how the varying depths of the front yards depending upon the specific home and specific lot. This is a built example in a project in Lafayette, and it's it is representative of the varying design of the front yards. It might be a little hard to see, but the one in the foreground has a patio and a bench in the front, because they don't have as much of a porch area. And and then the next lot has more landscaping, a little bit of grass and some shrubs on that second home. And I think this is kind of reflective of the scale and the varying porch options that you'll see at Rogers. And then furthermore, there's another comment made about the open space not being very useful to the cottages, most of it's located along McAsland Boulevard. We did purchase that property and we will landscape it and maintain it, which is a benefit to the community. But really, we want to focus the intentional design areas in the front of each cottage, and that's the area that's outside the fence, and it's about 10 to 40 feet beyond. That front yard area, on average, this is about a 25 foot deep area, and you can see these if you look on the FTP landscape plans, you'll see how these landscape areas are treated. Some more manicured common area that includes benches, small turf areas. And a small enclave for those local residents to congregate with their more immediate neighbors. This slide highlights these areas in front of the cottages that provides these enhanced landscape zones, and these homes do benefit from the adjacent natural buffers and open space beyond. And finally, I just wanted to address the general comments about how this is, this is too much, the homes are too close together, and it just it's too dense. Which are all generalities and doesn't really help us to qualitatively change anything to our design. Because everything we do is very intentional, we cottage, and this is how we typically build it with eight feet between the homes. This matches the previous slides you've seen in Blue Vista, Stapleton and the Riverdale communities. This is a aesthetic that we've confirmed works for this scale of house while maintaining drainage between the homes and allowing sufficient light to enter into the home. As previously highlighted, many of these homes, most most homes have eight feet between them. But many have 10 and a half to 14 feet between the homes, and overall with this community, we actually provide closer to 10 feet between the homes. So it kind of varies per lot, you'd have to look at the specific site plan to see that. And this is that same community in Lafayette, and as you can see, as the homes grow 15 feet or more apart. Actually, this one is more like 10 to 12 feet, probably. The aesthetic of the cluster, the the aesthetic of the clustered cottage, it kind of, it kind of loses its appeal. And then furthermore, this is the back of the houses, unfortunately, the fronts. But but as you go even further that like 15 feet or more, you can really see the the aesthetic really, it starts to really detract from the community, so. There's really an intentional reason of how we're citing them eight to 10 feet apart is really the sweet spot that we found that works best aesthetically. And maintains the livability of the house. And then just to overall to to do address density in general, the architecture of the we cottage, it really works best when they are close together. You know, to add additional space between the homes, it's to add space in areas where it's needed the least, and it's essentially wasted. These homes are designed to orient to the front porch, the small front yards, and as I pointed out before, some larger shared open areas. And to add just a few feet to the side doesn't really add anything useful to the design. If we were to move three, five, or even 10 homes, the aesthetics would actually be impacted in a negative way. While driving the home cost up and adding no additional usable area for residents. So with with each home that we remove from the community, you know, the incremental cost of land development, marketing, engineering, you divide this by fewer homes. This takes us away from our stated goal of keeping sales prices on these homes down as much as possible. In our efforts to work with municipalities about this type of cottage housing, we we often invite them, the elected officials to go and view our prior communities. With them and we point out the areas where for different reasons, the homes are further apart. And the universal reaction we get is the homes look better closer together, I think this is evidenced here in our proposed pocket park area where where you can see how the homes are clustered. So I thank you for your time, I hope you see the benefits of this cluster cottage design and in the associated plan development PD. Which which the benefits that this brings to the town is superior, namely the land dedications along the creek, the pedestrian connections. Particularly the the connection across Coal Creek and really an innovative neighborhood that is offering attainable housing. So I'm here for any questions, if you should have any.
Thanks, Mike. You could. If you could stop your share, that would be great, get back to the.
Yes.
All right, thank you. So, you know, if we have any. Questions before public comment for Mike, this really isn't a time for specific comments or statements of position on what he said, but if you have questions. For him, now would be the time, just raise your. Okay, Commissioner Harper.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, I have a question about the layout of the lanes. The way they're set up at the moment, every house on block two has to exit onto First Avenue. Then make a right onto Douglas Street before it can get onto McAsland. Did you consider connecting, I think it's Lane C directly through to Douglas Street? So that people would not have to get on to First Avenue before they hit the roundabout? And if so, why why didn't you do it?
I think that that if we were to connect there, that would be probably too close to the intersection, so I might defer that as a traffic. Question, because I think that would be very close to the roundabout if we did that.
It it would come out about the same place that the exit from block one comes out, or actually you could move it a little further west.
No, that wasn't something we explored, we, I think we liked the way that the homes fronted to Douglas Street and working through that with Stephen. It was important to create that frontage of homes along Douglas Street, and we didn't see that, I never even considered it actually. So I don't know, in my opinion, that there there would be less benefit to that than having continuous homes along there.
Any other questions for Mike? Okay, all right, so. Thank you, Mike, appreciate that. Let's move on to public comments. We'll ask people to raise your hand if you'd like to speak. And if you're on a phone, you can press star nine to raise your hand. And seeing hands starting to go up, so why don't we start with David Kerr? And make sure if you give us your name, your address. And keep your comments.
I think everyone can hear me there.
Yeah, keep your comments under five minutes. That would be appreciated. And I think you're on, or no, please mute it again. Okay, David. Did we lose David? Yeah, okay, here he comes again, all right, David, go ahead.
Hi there, apologies for those technical difficulties, Zoom just dropped out on me. I live on 403 First Avenue, so I am looking out on the proposed development here. I for one support the developers' right to develop this land, pretty much however they see fit, provided that it doesn't constrain. Public resources, and I just want to echo one of the, one of the comments that we just heard that. This would create a massive volume of traffic on First Avenue, and as they just outlined, all the overflow parking options, which. I think we can all say that people have more than two cars in a household these days on average. That's certainly the norm for people my age, I'm a 30 year old man, starting a young family, people have three cars. One for outdoors, one for their wife, one for themselves. So I just see the volume of parking and traffic on First Avenue ending up being an issue, and I would love to see that. That loop connected there to Douglas, but I appreciate everyone's time and hearing my opinion, and I'll yield the rest of my time for the floor, thank you.
All right, thank you, David. All right, Nancy Thomas, I have you next on the list.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, hi, thank you for taking my question, I live at 405 South First Avenue and. Upon purchasing or building this home, we were very interested in what was going to go on across the street, and people were very evasive with us. Hearing this. First Avenue as being a parking lot in front of my house is going to create serious concerns, that's a dead end street, okay, I live toward the end of it. That is a dead end street, it is hard enough to turn around at that street, so even parking in front of my home, I can't. If I'm parked headed south, I can't easily turn around and head north. Because there's nowhere to turn, the street isn't too narrow, when you've got people parked up on both sides of the street. Snow plowing will be very difficult if you've got cars parked up and down First Avenue. You know, this is not really, in my mind, good planning for parking situations, and I think that we need to look at other alternatives. Wasn't there a frontage road mentioned off of, was it off of Douglas? Which would give more opportunities for people to park, you know, the comment. By the gentleman earlier that, oh, they'll just have parking on First Street, you know. That affects all of us on First Street, and there are a number of of our homes here, and we are part of Boulder Creek Builders. So I think that we need to all work together here. As part of this, you know, Boulder Creek neighborhood and address this parking situation, it's going to be a nightmare. And I'm very concerned about it. So that's that's my piece.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
All right, Kelly Pittman, you're up next.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
We can, yep.
Yes, I'm also a new resident here in Boulder Creek on at 401 First Avenue on the corner. And I think. We need to work together as the current homeowners in this new Boulder Creek neighborhood, of which I think there are seven of us. work with the builder and you guys, because those people that are going to be purchasing this densely populated 61 units are going to be impacted by the fact that their parking is so limited. And that impacts me, a couple doors down from Nancy. I would tell you that, looking at the plan, I noticed that there's 13 three-story units and it doesn't look to me like they're garages on any of them. And if you look at their plan, in the alley, there's 13 remote parking lots and there's two handicap spots. So those people are going to be trudging through snow to get to and from their houses. Or they're going to be parking on the street on First Avenue. And there's not very much parking. He showed a lot of parking. That road is not very wide. And I'm referring to Mike Cooper, the parking thing that he showed. Also, the buffer area between McCaslin, which he touted as such a nice thing for McCaslin. That would, if, if they would move their whole plan to the east and use some of that buffer area, they could create more parking or an outlet around the back or some parking on the backside. I know it's not as nice of an aesthetic with all the houses facing McCaslin. But I'm not sure I'd buy a house facing McCaslin 100 feet away from it either. And lastly, I would ask Mike Cooper, he mentioned that he had a, a meeting with the Old Town residents last night. I hadn't heard about any of this until two days ago. And I'm not sure why he hasn't reached out to any of us in phase one to have a meeting with us about any of our concerns before going forward and putting this plan to you guys. So I appreciate you guys keeping this open and giving everybody a chance to have a voice. So hopefully we can work this out all together. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Kelly. All right, Eric, Eric Wu, you're up next. Go ahead, Eric. I think you're unmuted, Eric, if you can hear us, go ahead. We're not able to hear you though. And Eric, if you're, if you're talking, we have you unmuted, but just not hearing you. Give you another minute here to figure that out. Yeah, yeah, Eric, we're, well, I'll watch for you to put your hand up. We're, we're not able to hear you, so I'm gonna move on. But feel free to put your hand back up. We'll take you off for the moment and then we'll try to get you again. So next is Daryl McCool.
Hi, Daryl McCool, 312 West Coal Creek Drive. You know, I just, I have to say that this process of Zoom meetings and having it feel like people are attending and having their voices heard is absurd. Every single person so far that has tried to speak with the exception of one, hasn't been very clear. You guys break up, you go in and out. It is ridiculous to think that you are supposed to be conducting business and, and doing business about something as serious as this over a Zoom meeting where residents can't really participate. And what I'm hearing too is that commissioners are having trouble participating. So I just, you know, there's a lot wrong with this plan. The developers can talk their way out of a box if they want to and, and make everything seem like it's okay. But at the end of the day, the residents have to live with it. And I will tell you, their estimates about traffic are wrong. When Coal Creek Crossing went in, our traffic increased tremendously. So, you know, I just, I just wish we could all take a step back, take some breaths and really put together a good plan and not something that is too much and something in a way that residents are not allowed to participate in a constructive, in a constructive way. Thank you.
Thanks, Daryl. Adam Fels, you're up.
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
We can, go ahead, Adam.
Hi, everybody. Adam Fels again. I spoke at last month's meeting. I'm at, a new resident Rogers Farm. I'm at 402 South Second. And I want to personally, and I feel like it's personal, reach out to Bob and Dave and Steve for slowing down the process and asking tough questions. I also want to mention that even with all the work put in, I noticed that staff doesn't really have a full grasp of this proposal, including, and staff's under the gun here. So let me just say they're brave to be a part of this. As a principal of a school for 32 years, I understand how tough it is to be staff and come under public pressure. So I admire your guys for standing in there and taking this. I really do. But even when asked about the attached garages, you know, he didn't really even recall that whether it was 12 or all of them were attached, which is really not about a personal thing. It's really about how we given this the proper study and reviewed a really good idea. It is a good idea to use that area for attainable housing. And it is a really good idea to work with Boulder Creek Builders who are incredible builders and do a great product. I also think it's a great idea to have Wee Cottage instead of Townhomes. With all that being said, what's missing in the zoning plan is appropriate roadways and infrastructure. Anytime you put in 61 homes with alleyway accessibility for trash and loading and unloading makes sense, but without a frontage road paralleling McCaslin and trading the concept of a, of a frontage road there for a buffer, which might look better from McCaslin, but really doesn't service the neighborhood is a real mistake. Not only should we have a frontage road, but it should be offer connectivity to that neighborhood. One idea, I like to come with a solution, is to have it be a one-way, maybe clockwise or counterclockwise in the same concept of what our councilman suggested, excuse me, our board member suggested, so that it does connect both with Douglas as well as some way to access if needed, First Street. But to turn First Street into a primary load and unload for all those cars coming and going every day is a huge mistake. And let me tell you why. Just prior to COVID, the number of deliveries that come with Prime Delivery and DoorDash was exploding. Now that we see what happens, that people have gotten used to deliveries, the amount of traffic going down First Street will be extensive. In fact, I would say it would be unsafe. If you park cars in both directions and have the alleyways access First Street, can you just imagine little kids on a bicycle coming out of that alleyway? It, it's not something we would purposefully plan to create pinch points in a new neighborhood. And yet, we are purposefully creating pinch points on First Street. I have to tell you, I will be less impacted. I'm on second. So my direct impact is minimal. I fear for the safety of the new Wee Cottage residents and those who just purchased on, on First Avenue. And I want to also just mention a few other things. Some of the, the homes that say they have extensive pocket parks, I can't find it in the plan. I want to believe that I'm misreading the plan. But a pocket park to me should be an area where somebody could throw a ball, where kids could hang out with grandparents. And I just don't see that in this new neighborhood. So green space for the new Wee Cottage neighbors is as important for any of us as it is for them. I want them to enjoy their area. So, and finally, I want to just say, I think that the idea that we should share a homeowner's, which I will be working directly with the builders on, is absurd. These are not the same homes, these 61 homes, that the 27 or 28 homes that are in the first phase are. The fences are different, the, the, the amount of home to maintain is different. The, the HOA is already very expensive. I do think that we are, have a great builder and they're working with us on the unexpected HOA costs that we have. But I, I don't want to be working at odds with new neighbors because we were forced to be a part of an HOA that we really shouldn't have joined together. So I do think that staff needs to think about those types of issues, including, are these homes going to be designed with yards? Or is it going to be up to each individual 61 homeowners to go through an approval process for a six by 10 foot yard or six by six foot yard? I think we're, we really need to think about how we're going to support the builder to cap this in a very, very small space. And then finally, I would just like to suggest that while we can all say that it looks better to have homes further apart, I think what we're really doing is we're trying to make sure that Boulder Creek Homes can make money so they can do a great product. And I, I'm fine with that. But if it takes a reduction of five to 10 units to create a road and parking, then I think that's a great trade-off. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, Adam. And Eric, we got you back again. Hopefully we can, we can get you this time. And you're muted. There we go. You're unmuted. You there?
Hello?
Hey, we got you. Go ahead, Eric.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, my name's Eric. I, I live in the 310 Second Avenue. I'm just thinking the parking, the traffic.
And Eric, we're having a little bit of a hard time hearing you. If you could either get a little closer to your mic or speak up with, you're just a little bit quiet.
All right, I need.
That's better.
About right now.
That's good. Yep.
Okay, yeah. So, so I, I just thinking the parking, the traffic will, will be very messy. I would see on First Avenue, I would see cars line, line up bumper to bumper on both side of the street. And it's really not safe. You know, yes, it's not safe for everyone. You know, the traffic will spill over to Second Avenue also. And, you know, things change. You know, you think 95% is on McCaslin. You know, it could be 40% on Second Avenue. You know, things can change. The traffic, parking, this will be a huge problem. And so it would be nice, the development can consider a parking space for the neighborhood. We'll allocate more parking, right? So people will start fighting for parking. People will start arguing with each other. You know, who's parking this? And then we have to park at the target, you know, walk back. So it'll create a really, really big issue. Parking, the traffic. Can you imagine? Everybody has to parallel parking. You know, my wife couldn't do it. A lot of people couldn't do the parallel parking like in New York. I just squeeze in. I will push the car ahead and kick the car back and they'll squeeze in. So, you know, that, yeah, so that, you know, if you can resolve this issue, you know, this is a safety issue is, yeah. So the park, parking and the traffic, it will be very messy. Yeah. Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you, Eric. Appreciate it. And Suzanne, you're up next. We've still got her muted.
Bob, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead. You're on.
Okay, thanks so much. So I wanted to quickly say thank you to the Planning Commission for voting last time around to continue this hearing until today. I feel like it has made an enormous difference in our being able to really take a look at what I usually call this proposal, but I guess we call it the application. I'm learning better the language. I want to also say there are a couple of things that came out and this is just a tiny thing. And if down the road, somebody can answer this. I seem to remember that there was something about discussion last time around of the picket fences. And everybody said something about the picket fences. And then I thought I heard the developers say, no, each person will have to put in their own picket fence. That's just a small piece, but it's something when you're paying attention that maybe you pick up on. So Stephen Williams, it's the picket fence question. I have no idea is that put in by the developer or does each individual person? And this parallels the questions of the last person who was asking about who does what here, you know? So by going back, I want to thank you for this and I hope that each of you had more time to go ahead and look at this application proposal. I took a stronger look at it. I also took the time to practice Zoom. I've had more practice on Zoom since your last meeting because I was so horrified last time that you all had to put up with me. So thank you very much for your patience last time. I want to really commend, and I haven't met Mr. Witty before, but I want to commend the way he approached with his questions. And what I want to say is, that's what I was so fearful of not seeing or hearing last time around. I think, Mr. Witty, you modeled what a planning commissioner needs to do. And that's not to put down the rest of the planning commissioners, because I think you were trying to get to that. But it somehow just wasn't being allowed to happen. So I want to talk the model. I took notes on what you said because I think you were so right on the detail of what has to be looked at here. So that's my comment. And I also want to say thank you, Stephen Williams, for that piece that you put together that talked about how this goes and does not go with the plan. And I think that was very, very helpful. And I also want to say, for a long time, I've been a fan of Stephen Williams. And I sometimes think the position that you are in, Stephen, puts you in a place of being perceived as in the pocket of developers. And I think it is a hard thing for you and our town staff to remember. You work for us and your eyes and voice have to be for us. And I think it's a real challenge. So I want to commend you for walking this fine line. I came to some conclusions after that last meeting that somehow we have absolutely got to, and this parallels what Daryl, Daryl McCool said. We got, we got to find in this, for the staff, the commission and the board members in these times to find new and varied ways to seek citizen input. We're having a big problem here. These are major decisions in our community. And in some ways, I laughed at myself about the fact that I was so ineffective last time of being able to speak with you on Zoom. And it's hard on people who want to talk to you, very hard. And we put ourselves at health risk. And I speak as the mother of an emergency room doctor. We put ourselves at health risk to try to hold community meetings. And yet, we are all so desperate about what's going to happen to our community that we are taking those health risks. And I don't think you or our staff or the town trustees want us to be doing that. But that's the desperation we're all feeling. I think some, one of the speakers said more time is needed ahead of any decision making on this development application and other development applications. And I just want to say, the more you can slow this down right now, in these coronavirus times, all of us are burdened, including all of you, with more responsibilities, more life changes and adjustment, health and grief coping. I'm guessing that all of us have lost someone or know someone who is very sick in the hospital. We're separated from our families, many of us. And each of us is probably on some sort of a tech learning curve, except for the lucky among you. The town processes, primarily development issues, are moving ahead as though nothing's going on. Nothing has changed. Everything has changed. The only thing that seems to be proceeding as though nothing changed are the developers coming in with their ideas, their plans. And what do we get to do? We get to look at it and speak about one. I went to one of the meetings last night that was held and I ended up saying, and I guess I would say to you, there's something wrong here when we've got one plan and we get a yes or no. And we're in trouble if we don't go no, or if we don't go yes. There's something wrong here. There's something wrong here. I would like to encourage you very strongly to be looking at different proposals or applications, different models. I don't know how we could do this, but I just really, really feel that sometimes I resent so much that I'm placed in a position of looking at all the details in just this one. And somehow we're attacking Stephen Williams or somehow we're attacking the developer. No, I'm hearing this BCB is really good, but we're put in a bad situation here. I would ask you to think about the intention of the community, what people are trying to say to you. And then I would say, do not be afraid. Do not be afraid to take the time to wait, to set things aside, not only this proposal, but the ones that are going to come down to the pipe to you. I thank you so much for listening to me and thank you for all the work you do. And as I say to everyone right now, stay safe, be healthy, stay strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. All right, I don't see any more hands up, so I'll give you guys just a minute in case you were waiting before I end public comment. All right, is it Teddy Chavez here up?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, go for it.
Um, I just wanted to say I'm Ted Chavez, four oh one South Second Avenue. It's very interesting, and I guess this is a question for Mike Cooper, that we heard from several new residents on this project. How come Boulder Creek is not even explaining to the buyers who pay eight hundred to a million dollars for these houses? What's going across the street from them? What are they not telling us? Or what are they not telling you? That's what I'm saying is let's listen to the residents. You guys work for us and we appreciate everything you guys do. We really do. But to have new residents that are disrespected by not getting information from their own builder is pretty sad. I hope you guys think about that. Let's try to take the density of this down. The weed cottage is a great idea, but let's take the density down. Let's get the parking right. Thanks for listening and we appreciate you guys.
Thanks, Ted. All right, last call for public comment. Star nine, if you're on the phone, to raise your hands. All right, I'm gonna wrap it up. Thank you for everybody who spoke. And we can bring it back. Mike, if you would like to, there were some questions there that came out. I'm sure you were rapidly taking notes. If you could come back on and I'll give you enough.
Yeah, a lot to take in there. Valid comments certainly in there. The, the first thing I would like to address is, is the whole process here. And, uh, you know, I don't want to, I apologize, but it's not, it's just kind of the situation that we're in. And we're, we're following the process of virtual meetings. And I think I was short sighted, we were short sighted in thinking that everybody has equal access to internet and technology. And, and so we did have a face-to-face meeting last night in groups of ten or less and with two groups of people in original town. You know, I, it didn't even cross my mind initially that, that that would be something to consider to do. And in hindsight, that's, it's kind of funny, twenty, that, um, yeah, that, that, that there's more extensive outreach that could, could have been done and still can be done to get people's input and to make this a better community. So, yeah, I think it would have gone a lot different, differently in a different time, but it is what it is and we are where we're at right now. And, you know, so we, we rely on the, the process of notification. We mail out letters to residents, both existing residents in our neighborhood who were informed of, of the development, but probably, yeah, a more detailed meeting perhaps would have, would have been a better idea with those homeowners. And I do, I mean, I'm hearing, you know, the parking, I think that when I show all the dots on the screen on the streets and, and in the alleys, you know, people get this visual that every spot is going to be filled by a car. And, you know, it is a public street and it, and it could be, but my, I, I want to clarify who these buyers are in, in the weed cottages, at least what we know to date. They're two to three bedroom houses. These are primarily singles and couples. In a community of this size, we typically see about two to three schoolchildren age. So this really isn't a type of housing that appeals to a couple with, with kids driving age. I don't believe hardly anybody would own three cars in this buyer demographic. But it's, it's their right to, it's America and we like our cars. So I, I pointed out that we have four times the, the available parking, but I'm, I'm hearing it as a great concern. And I, me telling you that everything will be fine when Douglas Street is connected and there's no more construction. I think that is just pacifying people and not really getting down to the core issue. So I think that is something that we will look into in terms of improving the parking situation and possibly alleviating First Avenue. I'll, I'll work with our traffic engineer and Alex to see what potential there is to improve that for sure. We want to be good neighbors to our residents, first and foremost, who we sell homes to. We think this is a good product fit and it can function under the same HOA, but that is something we're looking at closely with Adam Fells and the other homeowners out there, and we will work through that. So it sounds like the, the parking and the circulation is, is the biggest concern that I had that came out of all of that. Minor detail on the fences, we will be installing all the picket fences. And we were planning on that the homeowners would maintain those over time, but we would initially install them. And the HOA would be enforcing the upkeep and the, uh, you know, the maintenance of those as, as needed. Yeah, that's, that's pretty much, you know, just in terms of Stephen and understanding the plans, there is not a fixed number of attached and detached plans that we have out here. This is a single-family subdivision. We can pair up some homes or have them detached on various lots. That's not something that is absolutely committed to. The plan that we show right now is likely the home plans that will be built on those lots. But there is some flexibility to sell a certain home on a certain lot to a buyer who desires a certain floor plan. And whether those are attached or detached, Stephen doesn't know the answer to that and he won't, and neither do we at this point. That, that is something that is subject to market demand and is left to the buyer, similar to the homes that we're offering across the street, where, uh, you know, homeowners can sometimes pick their plan they want and the lot. And sometimes we spec homes and sometimes we offer that up to the buyer. So, uh, that's the bulk of my responses here. I, I take every, all the comments to heart. And I do think that we will continue to work with residents in original town, our homeowners and, uh, and in general to make this a better plan. So we look forward to the planning commission's feedback and, uh, and to continue this discussion.
Thank you, Mike. And Bill, I saw you pop up on the screen. I don't know if you're, you have something to, to share.
Hi, good evening. Yeah, if you don't mind, just, just real quickly, um, to, to respond. I know, I think a lot of you are, are well tuned to, to the process we've been through. But, um, every time we do.
If you could just introduce yourself real quick.
I'm sorry, Bill, Bill Jenks, Bill Jenks, Second Avenue Superior Properties, we're the property owner. We're also incidentally the master developer across the street, but that's unrelated to this project. And so, so just, you know, I, I wanted to speak quickly to some of the process that we've been through on this. It's easy every time we have one of these meetings to, to look at it with fresh eyes and, uh, and, and, and not understand the process that this has been through. I have been going to meetings on this project with both the, the local community and town staff and the town board and, and you, the planning commission for four years since the first one was in, in June of two thousand and sixteen, per my notes. We have done no less than about eight different site plans for this project through that process. Each time we've done one, we've gotten feedback that has, has sculpted the site plan into a new and different configuration, making it better and responding to comments. That's why you have the pocket park instead of the connection into original town. That's why we have the connection to the roundabout. That's why we have these nice green spaces with the homes fronting them, um, as well as, as a bunch of other considerations. And so, you know, I, 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 I very much appreciate everyone's comments and, and desire to make sure we're looking at this as thoughtfully as we can as an architect and developer. I'll, I'll tell you, we have spent a lot of time on this plan. And, and I'm excited about Boulder Creek coming in and proposing something that really adds an amenity to the, to the community with the, the new parks, with the trail connection. And with, I think, a product that is, is really attractive and cohesive with, with the original town character. At, at some point, you know, and, and this is just sort of a necessity of our position. You know, we, we own this land, we, we have to monetize it some way. At, at the, at the core of this, there are investors behind this land ownership. And if, for whatever reason, Boulder Peak wasn't successful in, in getting approval for, I think, what's a really nice plan that does add a lot of amenity. I think our only option at that point would be to go with the, the approved by right zoning, which is Stephen pointed out, is basically sixty-four duplexes. And that would be sort of, you know, I, I, I don't mean that as any kind of a threat or anything. I just want to, to understand where, where that is. And so I, I very much encourage you to, um, to, 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 uh, accept Boulder Creek's proposal here for, for, I think, a really nice project that's going to add to the, add to the community. And obviously here to help out however I can.
And Bill, since I, I have a question for you later, but since you're speaking, I'm gonna just jump in and ask this. So typically we do concept plans. And we did one on this property and, and there were a lot of comments, but we, we've gone from one plan that had fifty-nine homes entirely, not, not sixty-one plus twenty-seven, which is eighty-eight now with this. Another plan that was sixty-seven homes and now we're at eighty-eight homes. And we've not had a concept plan discussion since then. And I just want to ask, how in the heck did we get from concept plans that said they were even too dense to now? You know, I, I, you know, it literally went from the fifty-nine homes with a commercial parcel that could be developed. That was not desired, so it went to sixty-seven homes. And now here we are at eighty-eight. And I'm struggling to not have seen any kind of concept plan. I, I respect the fact that you didn't get an approval on, on that plan. And so you built, used by right on those parcels, but now it feels like you're just, you know, well, I won't say how it feels, that's probably not appropriate. But, um, I just, it's, it's got me baffled and I'm just wondering if you could speak to that? Because I, I think that's one of our biggest concerns is against densities, so.
Sure, nah, and I completely understand it. Like, like you said, I'm, I'm looking at the, the old presentation that we, we made back in, what was this, in, in two thousand and seventeen, which is a workshop for town board that, that had, um, all of those original plans. And then ultimately led to the sixty-seven unit PD plan that, that replanted all of the area, including those existing, existing lots. Like you said, we didn't get support for that PD, which, which also provided a pocket park and trails and everything. And so we ended up getting into contract with Boulder Creek at that point. And, and basically gave them direction to just stick with the zoning compliant option, which is sort of where we ended that last workshop. We all, there, there wasn't really a clear direction and we couldn't get any positive feedback. And so we said, well, we'll just stick with the zoning. Since, since that point in two thousand and seventeen, Boulder Creek has really taken over the, the entitlement process as, as the buyer under contract for the property. And so, you know, we, we made that decision, I think, with them to go ahead and, and develop those existing lots as they were already planted, because that was what we could do at the time. And then to address this, um, this, this phase two area in subsequent planning. And we've, we've looked at a lot of different plans for that even since then. The, the first plan that we were chasing for a good year had basically all town homes in that area. And, and part of what we heard at that previous workshop in two thousand and seventeen was that we don't like all this density of sixty-seven homes, but we're less worried about what's up against McAsland. We'd like lower density closer to original town on Second Avenue. And you can put higher density on, on McAsland. You could even go three to four stories is what we heard at that workshop. And so we took that to heart and said, okay, we'll do the low density, large lots as they exist on Second Avenue, like you asked, and push more density towards the, the east side of the project up against McAsland where it's less sensitive. And so we started with, with a town home project to do that. During that process, Boulder Creek was running, uh, community meetings and, and staff meetings. And ultimately switched their proposal from town homes to their weed cottage product. Mike, feel free to jump in, but I think it was about four to six months ago. And really, I think that was mostly a response to this idea of architecture and massing. We were talking to staff a lot about the massing of a three-story town home product and being a wall of development along McAsland and not liking that. And the weed cottages get away from that by breaking up the homes with these setbacks and these separations and, and single-family massing that they thought was more consistent. The weed cottages are, are not as tall as the town homes. And they, they are more expensive to build because they have four walls. I, I, I think, again, Mike, feel free to step in. But, but for that reason, they, uh, they, they pushed that density to the, I think, sixty-one that they're proposing, which to Stephen's point is still less than the sixty-four duplex, attached duplexes that are allowed by right. And, and again, I mean, I, you know, I, I hate this position sometimes too, because I, I really do want to take all the community comment into consideration and respond to it. We, you know, I, I like to think we are responsible developers and good planners. And, and we do our best to provide a, a, a good product that contributes to the local economy and, and, and lifestyle. But, you know, at some point, this is our business and I have a family and gets to feed also. And, uh, you know, at, at some point, we can't just have, have this continued forever ad nauseam after, after four years. So, uh, hopefully that's a roundabout way of, of responding to, to your, to your question. And we're just trying to, trying to do the best project possible is what it comes down to.
Thank you. All right, commissioners, um, let's see, do we want to go around the questions? I kind of jumped in there on Bill, but, um, why not start with David? Do you want to have any questions for Bill or Mike?
I, I mean, well, can I, can I ask, allow David to see key to speak? He's been raising his hand. He's the president of our company.
Okay, I apologize, I had closed.
All right, Commissioner, I apologize.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, we can bring him on.
Thank you. Hi, good evening, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great, David Senke, uh, seven twelve Main Street, Louisville, Colorado. As Mike said, I'm the president of Boulder Creek Neighborhoods and I'll make these comments very brief. There was a, a comment by one of our homeowners, a, a number of our new homeowners in the Rogers Farm community. And I will, I want to make sure that, um, uh, planning commission can, can be reassured. We'll reach out immediately to, uh, the neighbors in our community to, to talk a little bit more about this. In particular, there was a comment made that there, she felt perhaps there was a vase of elements to, you know, what we have disclosed. The reality is this is not an approved project. That's the process that we're in right now. So it is very, um, it is very common for someone who's buying a home from us to say, hey, what, that property right across from my house? What is it going to be? And I'm sure that our answers sound evasive because it's not approved at this point. As, as Bill just mentioned, we're under contract to buy this property when and if this project is approved. But if it is not approved and we were to make some representation about, you know, what would be there in the future? You know, it, it's just not totally accurate. And so I can appreciate that, that our explanations come across as evasive. They're not intended to be evasive in any way. They're intended to be accurate as it relates to where we are in the process. So we have shared a variety of the plans through the evolution with homeowners that are purchasing at Rogers Farm, but they come with a heavy caveat that this is not an approved plan. This is not guaranteed to be there. We don't know exactly what that will be. So I am recognizing that, and, and I think it's worth noting on the, on the timing. As Bill mentioned, um, I know, uh, Bill and his team's been working on this for close to four years. Boulder Creek has been working on it for close to three years. And there were a number of comments about, you know, just slow it down. And I hear that up and down the front range. We're building in twelve different municipalities on the front range. And I hear two things on a regular basis, you know, please provide some attainable housing and please slow the process down. And unfortunately, those are mutually exclusive. Every time we slow the process down, there's additional cost. Every time we slow the process down, there's additional cost. And it and it winds up in in the price of homes. Planning should never be done so quickly that it results in a bad plan. And I I do take some offense to the idea when people come to this process and say, if you could just take a step back and give this a thought. You know, the town staff, many members of town staff, many members of the community who we've met with over the years, and the members of our team have worked very hard to bring a good plan. And we are, we are very receptive to continual feedback, and we'll continue to to evolve the plan and make it better. But I do, I do have difficulty listening to your comments that make it sound like, you know, this just sprung up out of nowhere. And so I wanted to to introduce that, and I also wanted to to make sure that homeowners from our community can be reassured that we will reach out. We've already reached out directly to Adam Fells, and we'll be meeting with him soon. We'd be happy to meet with any other homeowners in the community to talk in specifics about the HOA questions and specifics about any of the other concerns that that you guys have. So I appreciate the opportunity to address you and your continued efforts as a volunteer group. I sincerely appreciate the work you do on behalf of the town. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, David. And, you know, just on behalf of the residents and being one and being protective, this does spring up out of nowhere. I I respect the work you've done. You guys do amazing work. Your product is pretty cool, but with all due respect to many of the residents, this did just pop up out of nowhere. It's been three years since we've seen a concept plan. And then all of a sudden, in the middle of, you know, a pandemic, where we're trying to evaluate and residents are trying to respond to sixty one homes, you know, next to a development that, you know, yes, the zoning's there, but I ask you to be thoughtful there, because you're you know, from a from a town standpoint and a development developer standpoint, you're probably right, and a lot of work put into this. But to most people, this just popped up out of nowhere. So just some feedback there. So I guess Commissioners, if you have questions at this point, I I, you know, I'm not sure where this discussion is going to go. I'm going to leave the public hearing open. For the time being, I'll look to Dan to just, you know, tell me if I need to close this public hearing, or if we're getting into places we shouldn't. But for now, I'm going to leave it open. So if we have questions for the developer, or we want to get feedback from them, we can do that. So David, I'll I'll start with you. You're on my, you're next to me, so. And then Dan, you'll be next.
Yes. I I would like to perhaps expand on this concept of the sixty two or the thirty two lots on which we could build sixty four townhouses that Mr. Jenks was talking about. In his addendum, the memo that he wrote to us, Planner Williams was quite clear that the subject property would need a subdivision plat to be considered by PC and the Town Board to create development lots. I'm quoting him. Before that could happen, it's not clear that, as things stand at the moment, there's one five acre lot there, which is subject to the eight unis acre limit that's in the existing town code. So as of today, what you can build on that by right is about forty units. As it happens, I like the, I I like the wee cottages. I think they're an excellent product. I think they're much more interesting than townhomes. I think they'll look better than townhomes. But your apparent, and whatever you, however you meant it not to sound, it came across as a threat to build sixty two townhouses on an area that's not platted for townhouses and has to go through PC and Town Board to be platted for townhouses was not really very helpful. The question that I would come back to is the one thing that the area about this that I really am concerned about is that, well, it's a couple of things, really. I I I think this this kind of loop, where everybody in block two has to go out onto First Avenue in order to make a turn onto West Douglas to get to McCaslin is a mistake. I think you need to revise the traffic flow around that area so that people can get out onto West Douglas directly. That that, I think, is a real issue for me. I I live quite close to this development, and I have gone and walked all around it, and I've stood on down on Depot Street and looked at it. When you look at this from a high level, you are proposing to build sixty one residences on roughly the same area that you're building twenty seven residences, the separate hound townhomes, separate standalone homes. You know, I I can do the arithmetic and look at the maps and look at the drawings, but it doesn't necessarily make sense when you look at it from a high level. In some of your other developments, I noticed you started saying that you would like to group some of these buildings into cottages, put put some of these wee cottages into groups. The group size you have here along Depot Street, it's about twelve. Along Douglas Street, it's about eleven. I mean, all around, there are, I mean, th- these are long blocks of houses. I I actually think they'd look better if you did put them in clusters and put some, put some gaps in them. I I know that in your comments on meeting the various comprehensive plan code requirements, you you met the, you 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 did meet the open space requirements. But I do think what you've done is you've squeezed the open space out from the areas between the houses and concentrated a lot of it in on the area next to McCaslin. And I don't think many people can actually use it. As it happens, particularly at the Depot Street end of this project, you're well below the street level. And so I don't think noises are noises is as much a problem there as it would have been down at Calmantie or possibly in Rock Creek. I think you could easily space some of the Depot Street area out. So there wasn't quite such a big gap between that and McCaslin. But anyway, the general concept is that there's just too many large groups of houses, and it would be better if it was broken up into a few more smaller ones. At first, I was quite concerned about the setbacks and things like that. I still think a five foot setback is a tiny setback. I I've only looked at the development of Blue Vest, or I should go look at the other ones. But I have to say that the pictures that you showed during, Mr. Cooper showed during his presentation have actually provided some comfort on that subject, because I actually thought they looked pretty nice. Anyway, those are my, that's my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Harper. Commissioner Miller, you're up, and Commissioner Witty, you are next.
I don't think I have any questions at the moment.
Okay, Commissioner Witty, do you have anything?
I just have one question. Do we know what the proposed HOA fee, monthly HOA fees are for this project?
Does anybody want to respond to that?
I don't. It's not part of the application. So Mike Cooper would need to respond.
Yeah, I apologize. I do not know offhand what what that is. I can, I can look into that.
And my only question is, when we heard from one of the town residents, and they said their HOA fees are expanding and growing more. Again, I I think it's one of those things we want to understand as we as we go into this, because I think the people buying these wee cottages, they're, it's supposed to be attainable. And if this HOA fee is two or three hundred dollars a month, that seems not to be attainable for this type of product, so. That's all I have.
Just to tag on to that, yeah, I would like to know the the price differential of the HOAs were to be separated, how much more of a burden would we be putting on these new homeowners?
Dave Senke raised his hand again. I think he might have an answer to this.
Okay, go ahead, David.
Yeah, so appreciate the question. It's an important question. Cost of purchase is a major factor, and ongoing cost of ownership is a major factor. The 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 correct answer is, we don't know what the HOA fees will be. A huge part of the HOA fees has to do with how many homes there are. And if you have the burden of maintaining various spaces, if you have fewer homes, you divide it by less, by by fewer homes, so the the total amount to maintain. So we don't know what the total HOA dues will be. But I know that the econ- economics of it will be diminished if we have fewer homes. And the the HOA that we formed for the existing single family homes that are being constructed now also has an accommodation within that HOA to accommodate either townhomes or we cottages if they are approved in the new section. So there are economies of scale. One of the, one of the costs associated with HOAs is is obviously management. And if you have two HOAs, you have two different management agreements, and usually there's sort of a a base level of management cost. And so one of the benefits of having the HOAs combined is that there are better efficiencies. One of the downsides that we'll hear more from our current homeowners is, you know, do they have disparate, do they have disparate issues? But I can tell you that the HOA dues within the HOA that we've, that we have conceptualized and formalized for the current homes actually have two different pay structures. So there will be a budget created for this we cottage community, and there'll be a budget created for the existing single family homes. And the fees will be different for those different homeowners. And they will, and they will be, you know, they will be divided based on the product type. And the eventual fee will be divided, or the 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 total burden or total cost of the project from a management standpoint and maintenance standpoint will be divided by the total number of homes. So, you know, we are always working for the the best efficiency that we can get in the HOAs. And I will tell you, the most efficient HOA is one with thousands of homes. And obviously, that's not an option here. So if we do bifurcate the two, I anticipate that the cost of the HOA will be higher.
Thank you, David. And I agree, I can do the math and know that having more units, look at Rock Creek. I I live there. I lived in the Rock Creek community, and it was like two hundred thirty dollars a year. So it was, it was peanuts because of that. So I do agree with you. And and I do like that what you described, that you've already taken into account that there'll be two different fee structures for this. I think, to me, the issue would be on the board as this gets rolled out of Boulder Creek and rolled to the community. How do you remain, how do you have parity on that board between the sixty one we cottages and the twenty, you know, whatever the other number is, twenty eight homes, twenty seven homes? How I in making decisions? That that's where I see the problem. So I I don't need to say anymore. I think that's the problem. I think the cost, keeping them together is, makes a lot of sense. But how do you make decisions when you have, when you're not aligned? That's probably the biggest thing, so.
All right, thanks, Commissioner Witty. Commissioner Ritchie, you're up, and Commissioner Harden, you're next.
Yeah, I want to follow up on kind of a concern raised by one of the residents as it has to do with existing configuration or the extent of First Avenue and why that wasn't either continued further or connected on around to Depot. So I don't know if that's a question best for Alex or Steven. Or if that's too late, you know, I mean, if if connectivity is an issue and or on-street parking is a concern, it seems like we have a really immediate opportunity with that.
I think Alex is still on, but I can kind of give you some basic clarification is that that that's currently open space. So turning it into a road is a little tricky. The grades are also quite tricky there, so it's a little difficult. Circulation in general. The only, I guess, thing I'd clarify is that there is going to be, you know, not to the south, but to the north, there's going to be an alley connection between First Avenue and, or not First Avenue, but First Avenue, excuse me, in the alley between Second and and First Avenue. So there will be more of a a path, and and potentially, there's, there's, you know, from what I recall, we've got a road, road would be difficult, maybe, maybe a one-way alley or something smaller could be done, so we could look at that again. We did look at, you know, a actual, you know, at the beginning of this, before the the trailhead was constructed, the Orman Roche Trailhead, we did look at providing additional parking within that area. So there is room for something over there, so we could certainly look at that again. But really, we're 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 kind of based on, we we react to the the engineering analysis that's provided to us, and the engineering analysis doesn't suggest that there's going to be a traffic issue. So I know that there's a perceived traffic issue, and and I respect that. And I guess the the parking issue on First Street, too, is, you know, that's a standard street design to have on-street parking on both sides of the street. The only other thing I guess I'd clarify on on parking, just because I'm on the subject, is that that it's pretty comparable to actually what's being developed. So what's proposed for the weak cottages is very comparable to what's being built by Wright within the first stage of Rogers Farm. So it's an alley-loaded product with, you know, no real driveway designed off the alley, so it relies on garage parking and street parking for for their parking. So I don't know if that adds to the problem or, you know, mitigates it, but, you know, we're talking about a home size that's, you know, less than half of what's being built within the first days of Rogers Farm. So part of the assumption is that there's not going to be as many cars, you know, and again, you know, like staff, you know, we do think about all these different angles, and, you know, part of our discussion is, you know, and my thoughts on this, we're informed by, you know, the Northwest Area Planning that was done. And, you know, the smallest weed cottage product is just a, you know, a couple hundred square feet larger than what we were contemplating for ADUs. And the recommendation and the discussion around ADUs centered on one additional parking space for a hundred, seven hundred square foot unit. So these products are, you know, not eight hundred and forty square feet to, you know, fifteen hundred and change. There there, some of them are comparable to an ADU, and certainly, most of them are smaller than what's what's being built new product-wise within original town right now.
Thank you. That helps. We, I know we talk a lot about parking, and we've talked a lot about parking as it relates to town center, and this has come up, and I guess maybe it might be a question for staff or for Bill, but, you know, I mean, I don't spend a lot of time up in the residential neighborhood up there, but I certainly don't feel like it's overrun with cars or people can't connect through. I mean, I personally don't want to overpark neighborhoods, but I also want to be responsive if we have an issue and understand if there's kind of an outlet in the future, you know, to maybe to maybe look at that. But do you feel staff, I guess, or Bill, that there's a parking issue in what we've developed so far in downtown?
Downtown Superior?
Yeah.
I defer to Alex, that whether or not he's had any complaints. I I haven't heard any complaints about parking in downtown Superior. You know, I think there's some stuff about construction. We've had, you know, like when somebody's trying to get out on their alley and something's being built across the alley, and there's construction traffic in there, we've we've certainly heard complaints about that. But it's not some parking deficiency. It's a, it's a construction issue more than anything so far.
Yeah, and for for my part, the the only parking complaints I I hear are from the sports stable, mostly related to to larger weekend events where they're bussing in people or have big, big, big events. And even in those cases, the, we've, we've surveyed the the parking structure that's on site there, and it's not even filling up. It's just that
Right.
people are running out of the most convenient main street spaces, because there's only a couple hundred of them. But in in terms of what you're asking about the residential neighborhoods, no, we haven't had any complaints about having, you know, any issues there. And we do, you know, we we have a Metro District governance there, which would, which acts in the way that the HOA would here at Rogers Farm, and that makes sure people are parking in their garages and not using for storage and all of that kind of thing that that we know is so sensitive. And so I think that has has done a lot to to help, and it is important that you have a good kind of ongoing governance body like that, whether it's an HOA or a Metro District. But in in general, no, we haven't any, haven't had any issue. And as you know, we we are pretty dense. I think we're averaging somewhere above thirty units acre over there, so.
Okay. I mean, that was my observation as well, so I just wanted to understand, I think, what you're experiencing.
There's no parking in the alleys or on those, though, correct?
There's no parking along alleyways. There's parking within alleys as like certain parallel parking spaces or head-in parking spaces as we've required for guest parking. But there's no parking along an alley. Most of those are fire lanes, just like the we cottage design.
Yeah, I guess I just feel like we talk a lot about parking, but it hasn't to date come to fruition. The can, the level of concern that we, I think, have expressed, I haven't seen it actually come to fruition. I don't have any additional questions right now.
The only other thing I'd clarify in relation to downtown Superior is that they have a lower parking standard over there. So it's a higher parking standard that's being applied to the wee cottage product, so.
Right, so that even, I think, further, yeah, okay.
Commissioner Hart?
No, I don't have any questions at this time.
I have probably discussion items more than I have questions, so. Dan, is it okay for us to have some discussion with the?
Can I respond to one other, you know, just to make sure that everyone's clear on my initial analysis that was provided? So Commissioner Harper made some comment about, you know, it not being a by-right development. So I just want to clarify that he's absolutely right, that the subdivision process would be required. So that, you know, the subdivision does come, would come to planning commission on the town board, but staff's analysis about a development plan confirms that, you know, like they could come, like a site development plan, which is the equivalent of what you guys are getting through an FTP process, does not need to come to the planning commissioner of the town board for development of this area once those lots are platted. So, you know, and it's a super rough, you know, it's something that we don't typically do. It's a super rough kind of estimate as to how much developable acreage is over there, and how many lots could be done over there. We'd have to look at that plat, and we'd have to look at, you know, the development application that comes in in terms of what could ultimately be done. But a rough analysis suggests that 32 lots could be built, and if they were built as duplexes, then 64 units could result. And that's without applying or having to apply an eight-door unit, you know, per acre requirement, which is really like the way that the code, you know, the way that you layer the code, it really would only kick in if you had a multi-family development of three units or more. So a duplex or a single-family development wouldn't, wouldn't trigger it. So that's what I want to make sure. I was hoping it was clear through the staff and then through my presentation, but evidently, it wasn't quite clear enough, so.
Could you imagine how streets should be handled in that situation?
Like, do they design them? Do we design them?
So whether or not an application came in for streets or alleys or whatever would be considered through both the plat and through a development application. But yeah, they would, you know, it depends on what it is. If it's a public street, it meets certain standards. If an alley, it meets a certain standard. So it would have to meet standards. It would have to, you know, and really, one of the things that drives, like the comment was made, you know, and I started thinking about the circulation, you know, whether or not a one-way circulation through Block Two would make more sense. You know, the separation's the same kind of regardless, you know. So typically, when you get a one-way street, you narrow it in order to kind of to funnel that through. But what's driving the separation and the width of those alleys is emergency access. So it's the fact that the fire truck can go through there. You know, I don't know whether or not it would create less traffic on First Avenue or less, you know, perception of traffic on First Avenue if you had to come in from the south side and you exited on the north, and then you just had a quick right turn to get onto Douglas. It would be pretty comparable to what Commissioner Harper was suggesting as access on, and directly under West Douglas. You'd just make a right turn and then an immediate right turn. But, and again, Alex is on here, so he can kind of clarify what the, but that segment of West Douglas, you know, is going to have a certain amount of traffic coming in and out of it right onto a roundabout. So, you know, there's other traffic concerns about putting a connection or a driveway, you know, within a certain distance of that roundabout as well. So just for stacking and spacing and safety and all of those things.
Stephen, this is Alex. I can just comment on the connection to Douglas from that alley. I think you're right. If it was one-way heading north, you could make a right, a right turn fairly easily. You would have some issues making a left turn and, you know, the visibility of traffic coming south on McCaslin and turning right, but I don't think that would be a big problem. I wouldn't want to make it two-way because then you have to, if you're coming off the roundabout, making a left into the alley could be not a good idea at that point. So a one-way alley going north would make, you know, would function okay.
Do you want me to illustrate that for you guys, or are you following along with what Alex is saying? I can pull up a map again if you want.
I assume you're talking about private lane D just continuing right through to Douglas, and then lining up with private lane B and right one-way.
Being an exit only, yeah. So you would, you could, you could get out, funnel out onto West Douglas, but he wouldn't want traffic to come in from Douglas onto that, so. Alex, did you have any insights on whether or not there's a possibility for some sort of connection and valve along Depot Street to Second Avenue from this development?
You mean from?
From First Avenue, I guess, from there, yeah.
Yeah, Depot, I know, I know there's grade issues there that would be challenging, but the civil engineer, Jim, could probably address that. I think what we're doing here is more favoring the trail situation, trail connection, rather than the parking vehicle connection. So we do have trail connection right in that area, but it would, I know I was glad when they were connecting the alley up on the north end, where we connected the first, First Street to the, to the other alley and provided better circulation up on the north end of the development. But south, I don't know if we've ever, ever discussed that. And it was more using Depot as, for the trail connections rather than for the vehicular connection, but.
This is Jim Brostovich, Civil Resources. Yeah, we actually did look at a roadway connection there. We actually looked at possibly extending that First Avenue to the trailhead. That, and it was really, really difficult from a grade perspective. There's a sewer there that would need to be lowered, but really, it came down to, we wanted to preserve the trail and not, not turn Depot Street into a street.
So it sounds like it's doable if that's planning commission's recommendation, though?
It would be more difficult to do now than it was before because we'd have to change some grades along the, one of those existing single-family platted lots, which is not built yet, but it's not technically impossible.
I don't know if it solves problems or not. I just, I guess I would encourage Boulder Creek, if they're still engaging with residents, you know, to understand that connectivity. Or just from a circulation perspective, Alex, if you think that you can noodle on that one. I don't have strong feeling on it one way or the other. Just a thought.
Sure.
Well, I guess I'll just throw out some comments. Let's see, so. I do love this product. I don't, I don't want that to be misunderstood. I like the product. I think it's attainable. I think it's, I'm just nervous that this is the, not the most appropriate place to put this kind of development. However, Commissioner Harper made a, made a comment that I really like, and I thought about at our last meeting, which is, these aren't really clustered together the way it was described in some of the other We Home developments. It's more of just block, you know, face-block-type streets of these attainable homes. And so from a, I mean, there's a density concern, right? Everybody's concerned about density. There's concern about traffic. There's concern about parking. Most of those are caused because of density. I, you know, I wholeheartedly disagree with, I'm sorry, Alex, but with, you know, with what traffic is going to look like. I just, you know, I live here, and we've watched this since 1997 from developments going in and the traffic increase, and, you know, it just, it's noticeable. Maybe the numbers don't sound bad, but.
So Chairman McCollough, I'm sorry to interrupt. I think it might be appropriate to close the public hearing and kind of open it for discussion.
Okay, so we can reopen it if we want to ask?
Yeah, I think, I think you can, if you have kind of clarifying questions, I think that's certainly appropriate after you've closed.
Well, okay, let me make, let me ask one question. I may as well, because I'm sure the answer is no, but I'll just ask one question, and then we can close. And this is probably to Boulder Creek. You've expressed desire to talk to your residents. You've made comments that you were, you know, that, that you want to revisit some things. So I guess my question is, do you want us to, do you want to go back and revisit this? And come back to us? Or do you want us to keep going down this road here and keep talking? I mean, there was, I just got a hint that there were some concerns on your end, so I guess that's probably for Mike. Do you want us to continue this hearing, and/or do you want to, do you want to go back to the drawing board a little bit and talk to your residents and look at some of these issues that have been raised?
Yeah, I'm going to defer to David Sinky on this to respond. Thanks. Can you hear me?
Yeah, and I can leave this, I mean, correct me, Dan, if I'm wrong, but I can, I can continue this out to the next meeting if they just want two weeks, right? I mean, I can, I mean, we, you know, we have some options, David, so I'm not suggesting we, you know, close this all up and go back to, you know, you go completely back to the drawing board. I'm just asking if you want some time to think about all this stuff.
Yeah, so thanks for the question. You know, we, one of the things we struggle with, and we heard it a little bit last night, is there are general comments about it's too dense, we're going to have terrible parking problems, traffic's an issue. You know, we study this extensively on every level. We have, you know, probably $100,000 of professional reports and, and third-party opinions about applying the parking math, you know, to the homes that are here, and they analyze where people go and how they park, and how big the homes are, and how many people are likely to live there. And we have a parking ratio that is four times the code requirement, which, as Stephen mentioned, is even higher than what it is in Town Center across the street. And so we do struggle with the feedback, the general feedback that it is too dense, there are too many, that parking isn't good enough. We're using, you know, very well-established criteria, tested and verified by third-party consultants and your own professional staff, and we have exceeded, you know, most of those metrics significantly. And so when, when we hear the feedback that it's just too much, and we're using really fact-based design criteria and principles, we are left a little bit with, you know, kind of throwing our hands up, saying, what is it? So would this commission prefer that we come back with eight times the requirement for parking? That would be a very actionable criteria if we were given a condition or something like that. If we were, you know, given specific criteria from neighbors on, on what does it mean to be less? Does it need to be half as many? Does it mean to be five fewer? So I would say that we have, what you heard both from Mike and I, is a recognition that we have a lot of additional communication to do to those that are involved. I will say that my experience has been that this project has been met with some outrage, and every time we've had the opportunity to sit down with people and really explain the details, there's been substantially better feedback given to us and substantially better understanding of the project. And so it really isn't until you get to the public process where people really tune in. And, and the imminent nature of this, it's like a deadline in school, right? You get three months to do the project, but you're doing it the night before because now it's due. So we see this all the time, despite the, you know, high levels of outreach to neighbors, high levels of interaction on a regular basis. It really isn't until this process starts in earnest that there's a lot of, you know, real energy to get it done. So our preference is to move forward in the process. You know, as I said, one of the key goals that we have across the front range is to deliver product at a more attainable price. Every delay, every time we set back the process of, you know, and it doesn't move in, we never extend the timeframe by a day or two. We extend the timeframe by months and months. And so to the extent that this commission can give us very clear, concise, actionable criteria and/or conditions, you know, that would be very much appreciated. It's the type of feedback that we look for from the neighbors as well, is, you know, what, what does it mean to be less? What does it mean, what can we do meaningfully to address your concerns? And so our preference is to keep marching forward in the process. We have a lot of additional communication that we need to do with neighbors and our own homeowners, and we would, we would like to see this process move forward.
Okay, thank you. All right, so any other questions before I close the public hearing? All right, public hearing is closed. And we can start with discussion. Since all my stuff is discussion, I'll take liberty and stuff and go on last, and I'll go, I'll go first. So let's see, like I said, I really like the homes. I like the style. I'm not a fan of three-story. But, you know, that wouldn't be a showstopper, but I, not my favorite thing. I do, I do think that this particular development and this density is more than this neighborhood is going to be able to stand. I know consultants and staff all tell us it'll be fine and dandy, but every development that gets dropped in Northwest Superior creates additional burden, and people are already getting frustrated. So, and I know some of that's because we lived here in 97 and saw three cars a day go up the road on a Saturday. And now three cars go up in about three minutes, five minutes. So I like what Commissioner Harper said earlier about clustering these homes the way they were clustered. As far as density goes, some specifics, I do think there are too many homes here. I'm happy to pick a number. You know, if, if other people feel that way on the commission, and we can come up with a number to get more specific. For Boulder Creek, I'm up for that. I'm concerned about the parking as well. I think the residents are deeply concerned. I, my biggest concern is that this is just going to be rental units, right? People aren't going to buy, I know, we just love to think that, you know, family's going to come in here and buy these homes. And there's going to be a high percentage of these as rentals, and I have a rental behind our house, a couple of them. One that has five or six people living in it, and there's five or six cars parked out front. And our town doesn't do anything about the parking issues, or, you know, even if we, even if we complain, you know, it's, it's not really dealt with. So in other homes, you can tell, you can drive around original town, and you can see the homes that have five or six people living in them. And I'm nervous if that's going to happen here. If we have two and three bedrooms, you're going to get college kids, you know, putting three or four or five people in some of these homes. So that's, that's where I think the parking will become the issue. I also think that if we're going to put this kind of density in here, I guess I'd love to, I don't know how to ask for feedback directly from the residents at this point, but I'd say close Thomas Street, force everybody out through the circle. I don't want this, I don't want 61 homes going out to Second Avenue. I disagree with all analyses that that's, I'm sorry, it's a pretty drive. It's a beautiful drive. It's a comfortable drive. It's a lovely drive. And adding 61 homes with 120 more cars going down that road, that's what people are going to do, and they're going to come back from the marketplace that way. So, yeah, I'd be in favor of just not permitting that development from going out onto Second Avenue. So those are my, yeah, those are my, those are probably my biggest concerns. Well, I'll move along to Commissioner Harper, and I'm going to go through the same order. Commissioner Miller, you'll be next.
Maybe we could do it in reverse order, since I went first last time.
I'll start with Commissioner Harden, since she's not on the screen.
Okay, I don't have any solutions to offer. I think it's a great product, except for the size and the number of units. I tried to weigh the pros and cons of what I think is best. There are pros such as this trail, and there are cons such as this five-foot setback. But some of the homes in original town have very short, short set, front setbacks. But some of the homes in original town have very short, short set front setbacks. I understand it conforms to the comp plan. I'm concerned about the traffic going out to McCaslin because I agree, I think a lot of the traffic will go through original Superior on Second Avenue. I guess that's about it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ritchie, you are next.
Thank you. I just want to say I appreciate Suzanne's comments. I'm not sure if she's still listening and and recognizing that this is kind of a unique time and that we're all learning new ways to communicate and conduct business. So I acknowledge that fact and I have to say kind of on the flip side of that, I'm excited because I think that this platform, my hope is someday we can come up with a hybrid platform because I think this platform opens a lot of doors for people who couldn't participate previously. You know, moms with young children who go to bed and we do these conversations at 10 o'clock at night. So my hope is someday we figure out how to do the best of both worlds, which is allow in person and electronic and we're all learning and, you know, the first time anyone speaks at a public hearing, you know, there's a little bit of learning curve to do it in person as well. And so I acknowledge that we're learning new things and I think that's, you know, part of the reason why last meeting I wanted to continue because clearly there was, you know, a desire for more conversation. So I acknowledge that. And I think, you know, that this has allowed that to happen and I just want to say I'm really appreciative that Boulder Creek has, you know, had a neighborhood meeting in the interim. And I believe them when I say that, you know, when they say that that they're going to continue to do so, I think that they've been clearly they've developed, you know, quite a bit in in this town and and that they had a meeting and I and I want to take them at their word that they're going to continue to work on this project and and make changes as desired by the residents. I I disagree that this is, I, you know, a surprise. I think it's the form and shape that it came in. Right? It's never exactly what we expect, but we've known that this is development parcel and it's been looked at and it's under, you know, it's been under contract and under review. And so, yeah, the final configuration is never what we anticipate because there's always challenges associated with challenges and opportunities, I think, associated once you really dig in and you study a site. I agree with Stephen's assessment and I and I appreciate that we had two more weeks, you know, for him to to dig in and to do that analysis. And you're right, if a subdivision plat came before us that didn't have an accompanying FDP and it platted lots that are by right for zoning, you know, your math might be off a little bit, but it's probably it's probably fairly accurate and we wouldn't have a say over clustering and we wouldn't have a say over, you know, over some of these things. And so I, in my opinion, this development offers a lot of benefits that we wouldn't get otherwise. I think we do get a more attainable product by doing this, which I think our county desperately needs. Would I rather have affordable housing? 100% absolutely. That's not what the applicant is proposing in our code. We, you know, as a town, we haven't decided to prioritize that and make it a mandatory requirement. So here we are with this. And so because of that and that this is attainable housing that we desperately need, I fully support the application as proposed. I'm sensitive to the fact that the residents are undergoing dramatic change in a really quick timeframe. So I'm sensitive to that and I just, you know, say to staff, I guess, continue monitoring, continuing enforcement, you know, take those calls, which I know you do. You know, when residents complain about construction impact, if there's things that you can continue to work with these builders, do so to minimize that impact. But construction impact, you know, it doesn't last forever and I think the benefit of this type of housing product is good for our town. So I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Commissioner Woody, you're up and then Commissioner Miller, you're next.
Okay, well, thank you. I'll probably echo a little bit of what Lisa just said is that I do like the product too. I think it's a great product. And I've seen kind of how it's matured out at Stapleton, how it is at Longmont and how it's been developed at Riverdale. So I think it's it's a pretty neat product and I think it'll continue to grow. So again, I like the product. There's a couple of things I don't like. I don't like the three story because I think it it moves away from the whole premise of being attainable because when we start to go and I haven't seen the pricing, but I assume a three story is more than a two story. So when we say we're trying to give attainable and then we stick three stories in here, to me, it's 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 moving away from that goal. So I I'd be against the three story for that reason. I don't like the attached garages to the neighbors. Again, after seeing them, the look, I think the look is really bad when you look from the street and look back because it looks like it's a town, an attached townhome. Even though the front's not attached, you can't see through it. And so depending where it is in the neighborhood, I I think it's a bad look. And then I think the parking, again, I think to David's point, yeah, it'd be great to give you a number as to how to resolve the parking. I saw the parking at at those out at Longmont and in Stapleton and it, everyone's on the street. It is absolutely packed and I think we're foolish if we think people aren't using their garages when you only have a two bedroom house and maybe you have limited storage. People pack their garages, we're all pack rats. And even people where I live, three car garages, two of their garages are are packed with stuff. So I think we have to be open to the fact and realize that people park in the streets. And they do it in other parts of Superior here already, where they only have two car garages and and everyone's on the street. So I don't know how to resolve it and I and I do respect what what David asked for us. Give us a number and ask us instead of just telling us that it's too much. And I don't know, maybe we can figure that out. I don't want a good answer, but that's, that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Commissioner Woody. Commissioner Miller, you're next and Commissioner Harper, you're after that.
I'll say the short answer is I like the product. I think it's in line with the comp plan and and I think it provides some much needed housing diversity in our town. I also think the the town open space dedication is valuable there along the creek, even though it's not buildable anyway. In terms of some of the issues, trading density or trying to negotiate a less dense product seems counter to the attainable housing and it's already RM zoning. So the developer doesn't have much incentive to go less than what, much less than what they're already proposing. In terms of parking, I'd rather try and see us see if it works first before we just dedicate a bunch more asphalt to our town. I wish there was a creative way to have an out to that. And I was thinking one way is worst case, you know, so you take maybe three sets of two lots that are dedicated as additional HOA common space that could be turned into parking if the town or the HOA decides it's necessary. But then again, you lose, you know, there goes, the prices up a little bit further on the houses. So I don't know about that. Then in terms of traffic, I think the town still has plenty of options to address traffic concerns through original town. We there, those existing streets could be very heavily treated with traffic calming devices. We could do a choker on Thomas Street or Second Avenue or just really heavily calm Second Avenue. And if it's if it's really a concern, I've seen, we've asked developers to contribute a couple hundred thousand dollars to an escrow account to be used for traffic calming on local streets within a time period of build out of the development. And if it's not used and it, then it's returned to the developer. So maybe that's an option. I was concerned about separate HOAs, but I think my concerns have been addressed there with the separate budgets and separate, separate payment structure. So those are my comments. I'm generally in support, but if if we think we need to have some conditions to address some of the concerns, we could talk about that.
Commissioner Harper?
I have a feeling I made most of my comments when I was supposed to be asking questions. So apologize for getting this the wrong way around, but my comments basically stay the same.
I don't know, is there, there are a couple of things that came up to density. They asked about what that would be. Is there an appetite to request a lesser density? I'm, you know, I, I hear what you say, Commissioner Miller, that and that's what the developer says too, less homes means they cost more. You know, they, and I'm saying they, and I'm going to say they as a general developer because I've watched this since I moved here in 97, that starting with Sagamore Development, where these homes are being built for $222,000 and I think about two of them sold and then they were at three and then they were at 375 and then they were at four because demand will drive the price. So attainable doesn't, doesn't mean affordable. Doesn't mean it's going to stay there and I think we're foolish to think that they're not going to get, you know, that they're not going to take what they can get. So they, if 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 they're selling quickly for 400, it's going to be, you know, a New York minute till they're 450, 550. You know, just going to depend on demand. So you know, I don't know if there's a way to just lessen the homes and just request a little bit less, maybe bring it down 10%, 20%. Bring it down to 50 homes. That gets it a little bit closer to what what was in the concept plan in the first place. That'll lessen some of the parking concerns, it'll increase, it'll create some room for some parking, it'll create some room for potentially some additional open space or pocket parks that came up earlier. Because, yeah, I think attainability is, I I think it's a nonsense word. If we're going to go for affordability, that's great, but I think attainability is nonsense. They're going to take what they can get for this product. So I'll bring that up first. Any thoughts on that? If there's no appetite, I'll just let it go.
I mean, I have a thought on the bring, I mean, so everything you just said costs additional money, right? So I agree, would more open space be nice? Sure, it raises the HOA costs, it raises the development costs. So to what end? And I think that's, you know, that's, that's the thing.
Ease of parking.
No, I'm not, I'm not trying to, can I, can I finish, can I finish, can I finish my comment? I thought. To what end are we trying to mitigate? So you're right, are we trying to mitigate parking and let's talk about parking? Are you trying to mitigate? So you threw out a, you threw out a ton of, you threw out a ton of.
Two things, two things. Parking and traffic. I mean, that's what it's going to help, but it's, it it softens it. I mean, I mean, you said just a few minutes ago, Commissioner Ritchie, that we have an opportunity to mold this thing, but then you come back and just say, oh, well, it's just fine the way it is. And hell, if it's fine the way it is, then we could just say no and let townhomes go in. I mean, then we don't have any say either, but I mean, we have an opportunity here to try to ask them to do less. Because every resident, I mean, look at these comments, oh, my God, there isn't a resident, there wasn't a, it was hardly a positive comment about this entire development for everybody who lives next to it and for us to sit here and just pass it and I'd be just, I mean, I I won't, I mean, if we don't get something out of this and 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 even David asked, he said, just tell us what what you think. Give us some specifics. So I'm trying to throw out a specific and we drop this to 50 homes instead of 61. And is there an appetite for us to ask for that? I don't have to do it, this is going to go to the board and and but I don't know, we have an opportunity, so.
Should point out, I mean, I, I mean, Commissioner Harden circulated to us a petition that had 52 signatures on it, asking for this to be reduced. I mean, we have never, to my knowledge, at least in the two odd years that I've been on this commission, nobody has ever actually gone around and collected signatures and sent them to all of us. So it's an indication of how strongly they feel about this.
Yep. Yep. So for us to just pass this concerns me deeply. You know, I can't stop you from doing it other than to sit here and holler about it because I I'm just shocked that we would not even at least work through some of the requests that the residents have brought up.
Somebody else, since you're not interested in hearing my opinion, somebody else threw out the number.
My suggestion, or what I was asking for was could they break up some of the large, the long blocks and make it, make some gaps, make some open spaces, make some green. I, I, I'm hesitant to turn myself into a developer, a building developer on the fly. But I made an estimate that it would take five or six, it would, it might reduce the the number of wee cottages by about five or six to do that. And I think you could make it much more, I think you could make the whole development much more attractive. You could make it more compatible with the single family homes along Second Street. And you could make it, I mean, I mean, in some senses, this is actually a rural area. I mean, it was called Rogers Farm. It's not really a city development and I think you could make it much more attractive with actually relatively, relatively small decrease in the number of homes.
So we have 10 and we have six. Any other thoughts?
So that was kind of my basic math with thinking about it. Pocket parks that could be turned into parking was 10% is, you know, six lots, pick two lots in three different spots, take those out and they become pocket parts for now and converted to parking if it's really an issue. I mean, maybe that's, maybe that's the option. I don't feel heavily that that needs to be done, but if that makes the rest of the planning commission feel better.
Well, right now it's me, so let's, let's hear from others. So I don't know, Commissioner Woody or Commissioner Harden?
Yeah, I'll, I'll go. I I was kind of thinking the same six, reduction of six, and I don't have a good basis for why. I like what you guys have come up with. You know, it's going to give an overall reduction in traffic, it'll give more spaces. I would also seriously think about something that, I forget who said it, but of maybe moving this development up the hill to the east a little bit towards McCaslin because I think Commissioner Harper's right, the noise is going to, is not going to be as much as it is like in the Camonte subdivision where it's above the street. Here it's below the street and and the noise isn't as big. So maybe you gain a little bit of room, put some additional width maybe in the Second Street for that or some other places because of it. So so that's kind of my suggestion.
So like maybe widen, if you were to do that, would you suggest widening First Avenue or putting additional parking along that end? Is that your?
Yeah, I would say maybe widen it to give it because again, I just, when, if it's, I don't, I don't know what the width is, but if you have two cars parking on each side, can you, can two cars drive down that road the way it is right now? I don't, I don't know. I didn't look at that.
I will clarify, I will clarify that, that's probably a good thing if you don't want people cutting through, you don't, you don't want a wide street.
I don't think you want to widen the street, you get people driving faster. And it's easier than to be a, to be a cut through. If you make the street more open, more accessible, people are going to drive down it more.
Yeah, I'd probably choke it down. I'd use traffic calming in other areas and make that street wider, but that's just me.
Well, and we did choke downs on Coal Creek, which limits parking quite a bit. We didn't, doesn't look like that was done here on First. But we don't want to limit parking, so, but we have a mix.
You could get, if you're looking for a buffer, I think you make the front yard in that area bigger rather than the street bigger. That'd be my.
There are no front yards in that area because it's the sides of the houses that face the street.
Well, just shift the whole thing, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Well, so we can just, I mean, we can just throw out, consider moving it to the east a little bit and.
So if you're, if you're going to, if you're going to eliminate density within the development or recommend a reduction of it, then then space, I think the allocation of space is the next, is the next question. So I mean, you're going to, if if we, if we lose six lots, that's 10% of the development. Is my, I guess my question is, is parking still a concern? Should you or should we recommend? I think the more feedback we can give B C N for, you know, what changes planning commissions recommending, the better off they're going to be. And I'm hearing a couple of different things. And so what we gain by losing six units, you know, we could either, you know, kind of look at the site plan again and and try to tell them specifically where those units should be. I think the concerns that you guys have identified tonight really are centered more around the southern part of the site, so the 49 units within block two. But if, you know, one of the things I think Commissioner Ritchie just said was, you know, like further away from First Avenue. So if you want to increase the setback of those side homes, that's one thing that could be gained by by, you know, reducing units that kind of run That's one thing that could be gained by, by, you know, reducing units that kind of run. East-west, well, through, through block two. But if parking's also a concern, then, then maybe we need to try to give them, you know, a nudge of, you know, reduce six lots and add four parking spaces, or something like that, in order to. You know, help, help create, you know, the additional off-street parking. So that's kind of where I think it's gonna be most helpful, if we can kind of dig into that, and I can pull back up the site plan for us to, to look at collectively, if, if you'd like, if you think that would be helpful.
Stephen, can we?
I mean, is there anything to preclude us from, from having no parking on one side of First Avenue? Like only permitting parking on one side? I know there was. There, there's two, there's two elements of concern. One is the amount of parking that's gonna happen inside the development and along First. Or, yeah, I'm sorry, inside the development, the other is that First Avenue is gonna get overwhelmed with parking, and people aren't gonna be able to. To pull in and turn around if they need to, I think is what one of the ladies was saying.
So, in general, I mean, we could, we could recommend a change in design, so the, the thing I always try to clarify when we talk about a public area, the area that's gonna be dedicated to the public. First Avenue is a public street, and they're building it per our standard design. With two lanes, you know, two lanes traffic, one in each direction, as well as parking on each side, so. First thing I clarify is that, you know, we have a, a, you know, kind of a countering argument or concern that traffic, you know, will go too fast, and. Lisa's right, you know, the wider, wider the street is, the, the more, the faster people will go. But parking on a street actually serves as a traffic calming measure as well, so. I guess I'd be hesitant to, to make that recommendation, I understand that, you know, there's concern that streets are gonna be full of cars or whatever, but they also serve a purpose of, of slowing traffic. So, but, the biggest point is that it's a town-owned street, if there is a traffic impact out there, we can always circle back to it and, and, and make a modification to that street. It's, you know, obviously it gets built one way, but you could put up signs, let's say no parking, or limit parking, you know, hourly, or whatever, you know, like have some sort of restriction, and Alex, you know. Is the person that would be better, you know, suited to kind of clarify what those options are, but. I would be hesitant to address a problem that is perceived until we have it, especially when we have control of the public right of way like we do, so.
I'm okay with that, I mean, my big thing is lowering the density as much as we can stand to lower it, but. So, yeah. If we wanna add, do we, do we wanna recommend some allocation of additional parking and, and additional open space?
Well, I guess I would say, if we're already reducing the housing, let's not also add parking on top of that unless we know it's needed. So I, I guess I'd favor more pocket parks or separated in groupings like Commissioner Harper was talking about.
Yeah. So I just wanna throw those two options out there, one, either consider a different layout. To group the homes, or create additional pocket parks or open space?
I think the, the, from just the general understanding of the design and where this will probably go. We could either gain some additional space along First, if we want a, a larger setback for those few units that have a side yard to that street. I don't think that it came up as a concern from staff thus far. But it sounds like maybe, you know, and when you guys say clustering, that's, I guess where I wanna make sure we're talking about the same thing, so. I think if, if you're talking about like having a row of, of units, you know, maybe six before you have a break. That, you know, allows some sort of sidewalk or something like that, that goes through and, you know, connectivity as well as, you know, just kind of breaking up the massing. That's one thing, if you're talking about, I think when Mike's talking about clustering, he was talking about clustering around. A courtyard or something like that, and I don't know that. That's gonna be, that's more of a. Yeah, it's not as, as lateral of a movement, it's more of a, kind of both vertically and, or horizontally and. I don't know what the option is, you know, both east-west and north and south, you have to do in order to get that kind of clustering around a courtyard, and I don't know. I don't know how much more is possible in, in that regard, but, but we could certainly look into that with them before, it's not gonna be. A lot of time that they have to look at this before it's supposed to go to the board, but. It's, it's their opportunity to respond, and the board, you know, can take it or leave it, or, you know, tell them that they need to come back at the next meeting with, with those suggestions too, so. But, the more, the more that we can get from you, regardless, the better, in terms of direction for clarifying from the board, what, what you guys want and what you're recommending.
Yeah, to me, I mean, for parking, it looks like we have an opportunity with the plan of the right of way on Depot and extending First, and I agree, we, I mean, I, I hear the resident who said, we've got this dead-end turnaround. On First Street, south of, I don't remember what it is, I mean, that. That looks like, I, I believe that, that could be problematic, right, at least given the, the site plan I'm looking at, there's no, you know, hammerhead or anything in there, and, and so. I think you are kind of potentially creating. An impact for those residents, that's not gonna be functional parking. South of the private lane between Thomas and Depot. And if there's an opportunity to add parking, we should do it within. I mean, I, we should, I would explore doing it within, you know, rights of way, existing rights of way, and. Where, where it's intended to be paved and not adding additional paving. You know, on private, private property. Just a thought.
You're talking about connecting Depot from First Avenue to Second Avenue, and maybe.
Or even if it's, yeah, extending it around a little bit, or putting a cul-de-sac down there, so you can get people to actually turn around, right, like I agree, I think the resident who just said, you know, there's a dead end in there. That, that looks like a real concern, I don't know that it's. Yeah, it looks like we have an opportunity in that area to.
In the design.
Yeah, well, a couple of places we're looking at wanting to take away homes, so that would be one, cause to put a cul-de-sac in there, that could take out, potentially take out that. L twenty-nine unit, if we wanna talk about taking private lane D through to Douglas, that's probably gonna take out, you know, one of those. One of those lots there, so that's two.
And is that the priority, is to create that connection?
Well, I, I don't know, so there are other things we haven't talked about yet, I mean, I wanna talk about whether we wanna allow Thomas Street through, and let this development go through original town or not. I think David, Commissioner Harper, you know, mentioned running private lane D through Douglas Street to reduce the number of people going down to First Avenue, and Commissioner Ritchie suggested the cul-de-sac. I mean, yeah, the. I think, what else? I mean, these all have to be sort of thought, I mean, probably good to have all these on the table first, so. And then, you know, not, not adding additional parking, but potentially creating some open space that could become parking, that becomes a little more of a challenge. You know, if we wanted to just do walkways, you know, a couple of walkways down through, but, you know, some of these, just to. Kind of break things up a little bit more, I mean, you could run a, a, a walkway east-west, you know, to the, to parcel C. You know, for the, for the park, you could run a, a sidewalk, you know. Up to private lane D, or, you know, create some, I, you know, I don't know, just. Trying to think of other ways to, to. Utilize there, to reallocate the space, or. Asking to. Add, so. Commissioner Harper, what do you want about private lane D, do you, or, why don't we take that one first, what do we?
I, I, I think it would be beneficial to the residents in block two, as well as to the other people who live on. In the, in the single-family homes. To, 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 to have access to. That street, I'm sorry, what is it?
Private lane D.
Up to Douglas, without having to go all the way, I'm thinking about somebody who's on the, on private, the, the private lane at the end there. What's it called, private lane E. If you're, I, I, I think people who live on private lane C and private lane E, or the eastern end of private lane E. Would, would welcome an opportunity to get to Douglas, without having to go down to First Avenue. And then go up, make a right turn, I, it, it, it may just be a prejudice on my part, but that's my prejudice, so.
Well, I like it, and I think it's a reasonable allocation of. The six homes we're gonna ask for, so. Is that okay with everybody? All right, the cul-de-sac down on the end of First.
Cul-de-sac or hammerhead, I don't wanna.
Oh, hammerhead lets you, what, turn around and?
Yeah, I mean, just some sort of way to turn around in there, so I don't know, cul-de-sacs have a huge footprint, I would lean on Alex and the engineers.
Alex, do you wanna pitch in, are you here, or, or, or Jim?
I, I mean, I don't wanna do a hammerhead if it doesn't add parking, I, I don't know, just, yeah, go ahead.
I guess the only thing I clarify is that that First Avenue is technically not part of this application, so there's a, a very short sliver of it in order to be widened, so we have an eight-foot sidewalk along the east side of First Avenue. But the, it's not part of the proposal, so, I, I understand that it's impacted by the proposal and how that area circulates. I'm just a little wary of having a condition that applies to something that's off-site.
Fair enough, I think that could be, um.
Recommendation or something?
Yeah, I just think that there's an opportunity in there to. Add some on-street parking and improve some circulation and improve kind of a bottleneck down there at the end of First Avenue. So. Yeah.
We could make it, I'll make it a condition, that's, that's fine. Do you wanna leave it up to the applicant what to do as far as creating some open space or walk sidewalks, or just to break, break this development up a little bit? I think we're taking up, what's that, Commissioner Harper?
Sorry, to, to answer. Stephen's question about what, 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 what I, what I was thinking of was actually, instead of having blocks that are sort of ten or twelve units long. Having blocks that are five or six units long, and doing something with landscaping between them. I, I actually agree with Boulder Creek neighborhoods, that you, you, you don't gain it, that, that, that these units look better when they're closer together than when they're further apart. But I, I, I think, I, I mean, I think just from the sheer, sheer, if, if, if you were looking at a row of ten of these houses altogether. Particularly if any of them had garages between them, that's a fairly, I mean, they're thirty-two feet high, and the three-story ones are thirty-eight feet high, so. I, I mean, this is a pretty substantial. Visual impact, I, 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 I think just having five or six, and then. What Commissioner Miller calls a pocket park, I think, between them. Or something greenery that would break up that, 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 that line of buildings would actually make this area more attractive.
Well, I'm pulling, you know, pulling some of those homes on private lane B back towards the. McCaslin a little bit more too, and opening up a park in there or something, or pulling, pulling two of the houses out and clustering them together. Cause I agree, they look better, they look great when they're, when they're close together, and I agree, adding side yards doesn't buy anybody anything. But if you can create better places to throw baseball, or another place to. And there really isn't a whole lot in here. To, to do much other than parcel C, so. Maybe we could just consider this conversation a, a, our direction, they're, they're listening, so.
Yeah, I hate to be overly prescriptive when, you know, they have great landscape designers on, on call, and.
So our goal is, can we lower this by six, reallocate some space for a private lane D, and maintain the clustering. Maintain the distance and the clustering, create. Another open area or two.
I think Commissioner Harper's suggestion of, of, you know, maybe limiting the, the row of buildings to five or six is. Is, is a useful direction, you know, and it's kind of getting to what you guys are talking about, so when they pull one out, from what I'm understanding from you guys saying, you're not asking for. Parking necessarily, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, kind of follow, follow Commissioner Miller's suggestion that, you know, we're reducing the density. Hopefully that addresses the parking concern, but that, you know, if they limit the amount of, you know, if there's some sort of open space or, you know, pathway, that's, you know, every. You know, that separates units from being, you know, ten to twelve, and actually breaks them up at, at six, or. That's what I'm hearing, and I think that that would, would change it, you know, and it would, you know, better, I, I just feel like that's kind of where we're going, or what I'm hearing, and I just looked at the site plan again, and there's. A couple of rows that are, you know, either ten or twelve, three in particular, within block two, that would get broken up that way. And I think that the additional open space or parking, or open space and pathways, excuse me, is, is what I'm hearing you guys are recommending.
All right, so reduce units. Take private lane, reallocate some of that, take private lane D one way out to West Douglas Street, break homes up at five to six. Use your judgment for. Whether that's trails or open, open space, let, let them figure that out.
Okay.
That sound all right to everybody? All right, so there was discussion around Depot Street. That need further discussion, or do we wanna let that be, I forget who brought that up? Like a couple of.
Well, I, I mean, I understand it's not part of, is that, is Depot platted in that area, or no, is that just an extension of the existing right-of-way to?
I believe it's still platted as right-of-way, but it was also a train.
Oh, it was the train right-of-way, that's right, okay, okay.
But again, it's off-site too, so.
Yeah, no, I get that, right, I don't think it should be continued. I think if anything, as a town, we have an opportunity to look at Depot between First and Second, I don't think we should. Pave a street south of this development at Depot, but. Cause I don't know that that adds anything, given the site design. But I would lean on the residents on that from, you know, if that's something that the town thinks, you know, and when I say town, I mean. The residents and staff and town board and planning commission think that that connectivity would be beneficial to the whole part of original town south of the creek.
Okay.
Where, where would Depot Street go, is it just to provide access, another access down to Second, or?
It would just continue, yeah, I mean, basically, it would, you would continue First, and then continue Depot Street along the right-of-way, much like you have. Around between Second and Third.
Okay, but stopping at, stopping at first.
Stopping at first, right, so it curves around at first, then you have an opportunity for, right, we don't have these dead-end streets. You're potentially adding parking on street, which I think is a fine use of a street, but I know that that's highly sensitive to the residents, so that's why I say on this particular issue. I don't think it solves one way or another, I think it's a potential outlet for more parking, if more parking is needed, but I think you have to balance that with. The connectivity desires of this part of town and the feasibility as well.
So just so everyone's seeing it, I think that what we're talking about on Depot Street is actually between.
Yes.
First Avenue and Second Avenue, and a connection here, so that when people come down the street. Especially this, I mean, there's like two, two kind of solutions here, is that this street doesn't continue. Past this intersection, and then people can actually circulate through the development to get the other direction. But if it's gonna continue down here, and access again to these units is through the alley. Then, then maybe a, a one-way outlet or something that connects Depot Street back to, or connects First Avenue back to Second Avenue. But that's, you know, like, I've heard two different things from you, you know, I've heard Commissioner McCool saying that, you know, he may not like the Thomas Street connection, if, if we're gonna have that much traffic in. Original town, so providing a different outlet. To anyone's, you know, like, just to kind of allay that concern, it's, it's really just to serve this traffic in the southern segment of the, the block, so that people aren't turning around, and, and actually, like, if you connected this. This last segment here, at, at the bottom, you'd gain probably two to three parking spaces, you know, on-street parking spaces. Within this area as well, so. I think it's something we can look at as, as a staff, again, Depot Street's owned by the town, so it's, it's something that could be considered as part of. You know, future development improvement if, if we need it, but it's also something that we could consider now, if you guys feel like traffic's enough of a concern.
Well, it doesn't impact the trail connection, so I know, you know, if it, if it basically kind of rounds the bend just on the inside of that trail connection, so there wouldn't be a conflict there, we get to keep the trail. just on the inside of that trail connection, so there wouldn't be a conflict there. We get to keep the trail connection. I mean, you guys know my perspective. I always vote for more connectivity rather than less. But in this particular instance, you know, I would defer to kind of what the residents in this area want. But I think it's a possible solution to parking concern.
Okay.
And I don't know what to think about Thomas Street. I mean, I like connectivity too. But I am deeply concerned. I mean, it's the density that's the problem, not the fact that there's connectivity. There's probably some reduction because people from this side of original town will now have another way out to McCaslin Boulevard rather than going down to, down to Coal Creek.
I, I think that's useful because it's all the new buildings on the west side of Third Street, between Third Street and McCreek. There's going to be nine or 10 houses over there.
Right, yeah.
They will probably use Thomas Street to get to McCaslin rather than going up Second and along Coal Creek.
Yeah, agreed.
Yeah, I think, I think losing Thomas and not having Depot and leaving this an island is not good planning, in my opinion. Because it would basically be an island then, and I don't think any policy supports, you know, kind of having an isolated development with a one-way in and one-way out.
Had it for a long time in Old Town. Yeah.
Are you guys, I'll stop sharing this, sorry.
No, that's helpful. Thank you.
All right, so I guess there's, you know, agreement to lower this to by six units. We've got that verbiage down. Do you have that verbiage that we could just work that in, Stephen?
The appetite to go up to lose four rather than six?
Not for me. I want to go to 10, but that's just me. I think the more we can get, the better.
Why four?
The original, so of course I'd be fine with four too, but whatever the group.
Lisa, why, why four? What?
Sure. So I'm kind of looking at the site plan and I'm seeing, you know, some connectivity. If we break it up into the cluster of six, which I think, you know, I think that's good. It's adding some pedestrian connectivity. I'm seeing, you know, probably you're losing one unit on the south side of Private Lane E between, yeah, like, one unit down in there. You're losing one unit up along Douglas. And then maybe one unit within each of those segments there. So to me, that's four units. I think you get that meaningful change of pulling, you know, kind of breaking up these longer rows and, and providing a little more breathing room in there. So that's why I'm, that's why I would propose four, just looking at the site plan, listening to Commissioner Harper's suggestion of, you know, a maximum of maybe six.
And I'm just interested in lessening, lessening density as much as we can. So that seems to be the biggest complaint from my residents. I would opt for eight or 10, but I don't think there's an appetite for that.
So just so I'm following, is the intention here to come up with a list of, of items to, to provide to the applicant so then, and then continue this, this hearing so that they can come back with your kind of modified application?
My preference would be to hopefully land on a consensus and move them along.
Sure. So, so in terms of if we were to include these as conditions,
Yep.
There's just kind of two ways of doing it. One would be that the applicant would agree to some of these conditions. And then the second way of doing it is it would have to be essentially kind of couched in, you know, a provision of the code or comprehensive plan. In other words, if, if the applicant didn't agree to these conditions, the way to include them as a condition would be for, you know, there'd be, there'd be a basis in the code or the comp plan. So I think those are kind of the, the three options that, you know, we can, we can use on these.
Can we hear from the applicant? What their thoughts are at this point?
Do I need to reopen the public hearing or can then we just ask them to?
I, I think it's fine. They just ask them what their position is on each of these conditions.
All right, so then I guess we can bring Mike back on if we're talking about reducing this by six homes, putting in a one-way street out to Douglas Street and kind of expanding the, breaking up the, the rows of homes to, and creating some open space. Those are, I think those are the only ones we're, we're on right now.
Yeah. Was back on to, David, you want to cover this or?
Yeah, so the specificity here is helpful and the reality is these, these plans are highly, highly engineered. Every element of it is, you know, highly tuned. So for us to move along with, with recommendations and conditions from, from this body would be helpful and we would need to go back into the engineering to get really into the weeds to see what can be accomplished. So it's very difficult on the spot to say, yeah, we, you know, we can do this or we can do that. We would, we would take the feedback, the specificity of this feedback's helpful and we would do everything we could to comply with the condition moving forward. And sometimes as we move things around, we, we discover alternatives that we think are, you know, sort of consistent with the intent of the feedback that we heard, but not necessarily a specific thing was recommended here. And a lot of engineering questions come into that, you know, questions about sliding the community over. We know there are huge engineering concerns about that. So, but, but this is, this is helpful and we would appreciate having conditions and, and moving along to the next stage.
Dan, does that satisfy them?
Yeah, so, so I guess my understanding is that you'd be agreeable to have these, these as conditions within the, the resolution? Is that, is that the applicant is indicating?
You asking the applicant?
Yes.
Yes, that, that would be fine with us and we will, we, as you know better than we do, planning commission will be, or pardon me, city council, town board will be, you know, taking into consideration your comments and conditions. And then we would bring the very best plan we can forward, you know, addressing all of those.
Good. That should work. Okay. All right, anybody want to tackle these motions? Because.
Which one is the first one? Stephen, can you help refresh the order of this?
Yeah, the order is the rezone, the plat, and then final development plan.
They're the only things I didn't print out.
Let's see, do you have them, Lisa? Do you have mine? I think I have.
No, I don't have them, I don't have them pulled up. I was just, before we make a motion, I, it's not entirely clear to me what the conditions of approval are. So if someone could kind of concisely state what you want to put in as conditions?
Reduce the units by six units and extend Private Lane D one way to Douglas. And break up the homes to, I'll say between five, five to six, five to seven, I want to, I guess we can say five to six groupings and then leave it up to the developer to create walkways or open space or pocket parks or whatever helps break those homes up to, to groupings of five or six. I think those are what we landed on.
And I just clarify that those changes affect every application that we're looking at. So the same condition can apply to each, each of the motions that you guys are actually making.
So is the rezone first?
Yes.
All right, I have it up. Town of Superior Planning Commission Resolution Number Seven, Series 2020. Resolution of Planning Commission of the Town of Superior recommending approval of a planned development to rezone Rogers Farm subdivision from medium-density residential and agricultural urban reserve to plan development, case number RZN 2020-3, with the conditions as stated by children in the cool.
I have a motion by Commissioner Richard. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harper. You want to do a roll call vote?
Richie?
Yes.
McCool?
No.
Woody?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Harden, yes.
Answer the motion passes, sorry.
And the next one, we have Resolution Number Eight, Series 2020. Resolution of Planning Commission to the Town of Superior recommending approval of a final plat for the Rogers Farm subdivision, case FP 2020-3, with the conditions carried forth from the rezone.
You have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Second by Commissioner Miller and roll call votes.
Miller?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Harden, yes. Richie?
Yes.
McCool?
No.
Woody?
Yes.
Thank you.
And finally, Resolution Number Nine, Series 2020. Resolution of the Planning Commission recommending approval of the final development plan for Blocks One and Two with Rogers Farm subdivision, FDP 2020-2, with the conditions carried forth from the rezone and the plat.
Motion by Commissioner Richie. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Second by Commissioner Miller and roll call vote.
Harper?
Yes.
Richie?
Yes.
McCool?
No.
Woody?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Harden, yes.
All right, that passes. Is that it? Get it?
Except for that one. Throw out one more.
Can we make a motion right now for the second one?
All in favor, say aye.
I need to open a public hearing for that.
Yeah.
Hang on, let me get back to my.
Just kidding.
I wasn't.
I think we probably can go through a real fast presentation.
Yeah.
Probably even faster than I had planned.
All right, I want to open a public hearing to review and comment on the rezoning application for the CenturyLink property planned unit development with Regional Act, PUD, with Regional Activity Center, RAC designation to open space natural or OS-N. The request proposed rezoning approximately 182 acres of CenturyLink Level Three property purchased by the Town of Superior. Do we want to have the presentation or do you want to do it really quickly or, or go it? Or does somebody want to make a motion?
Stephen, I'm sure it's really great, but I, I will make a motion that we pass and go to sleep. Is that possible to do?
Can I second that motion?
What was the motion?
That we just vote.
Oh, that we just vote, okay. Well, somebody needs to.
But it was just not to be the annoying, just double check that there's no public comment.
Yeah, let's, and can you take this chair down, Stephen? Okay, sorry.
If that's the direction.
Well, that's, okay, so that, well, that was the Wee cottages, wasn't it?
No, it was the CenturyLink proposal.
Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
McCool, excuse me, did you want, I'm sorry, this is Phyllis. Did you want proof of publication for this?
Yes, yes. So, yeah, let me get, let me bring up my, let me bring this up. So, yes, can you, you have proof of publication? Yes, I see it. Thank you.
Yes.
Bring up my public hearing procedure. So, okay, we have, we have requested a pass on the presentation. Are we permitted to do that, Dan?
I think that's why, just, I guess acknowledging that you've all, you know, reviewed the materials and the public comments.
We do have a hand up for public, so I'll take public comment. Kelly Pittman is, has, has his hand up. Kelly, go ahead.
I had my hand up for the last hour trying to get a word in on Rogers Farm. I had an idea. You guys were talking four to six units being taken out. If you look along First Avenue, there's four units. That would move it to the east by those properties, which is about 24 feet. And then you have the exit on to the road exiting out of the, to the roundabout. That would be a fifth unit. And then you have one in the middle on the south end that would be a sixth unit. But nobody acknowledged me until now.
Well, yeah, public comment was closed, Kelly. So thank you for the comments, though. We, we closed that public comment and.
And that would solve your parking problem and your turnaround problem on First Avenue. Just an idea.
All right, and the developer would have, would have heard you. So, but, but appreciate that. Thank you. All right, and is there any public comment on this agenda item? All right, don't see any. I'll entertain. Oh, what do we have here? Get the motions. I'll entertain a motion if somebody's ready to do it.
Just, just close the public hearing.
Oh, sorry, yeah, let me close public hearing. Thank you. Public hearing is closed.
We'll make a motion of approval based on all of the analysis in the staff report and the findings in the resolution that the application meets all the requirements in the town code and make a motion to approve Resolution 10, Series 2020, recommending approval of an application to rezone the former CenturyLink property from PUD-RAC to OS-N open space, case number RZN 2020-3.
Seconded. Second by Commissioner Miller and roll call vote, Phyllis.
Richie?
Yes.
McCool?
Yes.
Harper?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Harden, yes. Thanks.
All right, that passed unanimously and we have any announcements? Is that the last thing on there?
It's like 10. No. Just, just one. I just want to clarify. Well, first, thank you guys for all your time. I know this is a late hour and we had to have a second meeting on this application. We've had a few of those recently. So I appreciate your time as always. There won't be a planning commission meeting, a second planning commission meeting this month. And there's likely not to be a planning commission meeting the first week of August. So I will confirm that in upcoming weeks, but certainly we won't have a planning commission meeting later this month. So I'll confirm the August, August meeting later July. So, but thank you guys again for your time and I appreciate all your diligence on this as always.
All right, thank you, Stephen. Appreciate it.
Actually, I think we should be thanking Stephen for all the time he put into it.
What's that? Yeah.
We should thank Stephen for all the time he's put into it, plus all the harassment he's taken while he's been putting the time in.
Yeah, that was impressive for, for both Steve and Phyllis to go through all that. All right, I guess we're adjourned. Thank you.
All right, thank you guys. Good night.
Thank you.